Hello, Mahalo for joining us today. We will begin with a pool from Commissioner Dennis Neves.
Hello, Pudikako. Heavenly Father, we ask you to be with us today and thankful for the for the Commission, the Department, visiting us here in Kauai. We ask that your spirit be with us as we do the work of our blessed Prince Kuil. And that we work together in forming a good coalition to get our folks in homes. We ask that you bless those that are here, those that are online, that no harm or danger fall upon them and they leave. And we all engage in a good conversation about how we should move forward. We ask that you be with us today in spirit. And we look for your guidance throughout this day. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. The meeting of the One Homes Commission is called to order. The meeting is being held virtually on Zoom and in person at the Sheridan Kauai Resorts Poipu Ballroom. I'm Callie Watson, Chairman of the Commission. Today's date is Monday, May 19, 2025. The time is 9:33. Leah, please call the role.
Commissioner Freitas, he will be joining us soon. Commissioner Kalakini will also be joining us soon. Commissioner Kalepa. Commissioner Kenea Kua.
Aye.
Commissioner Lasua.
Aye.
Commissioner Marfil is excused. Commissioner Nevis.
Aye.
Chair Watson.
Here.
Huh. Oh, and I'm sorry, Commissioner Namu'ou, sorry.
Yeah.
I saw your name. Okay. Five members present, we have a call.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with respect to item E5, that'll be deferred. At this time, I'd like to note that this item E5 will be deferred to next month to allow staff time to continue coordination and ensure a clear understanding of the proposal. For the record, the three wells in question are reserved exclusively for DHHL projects, past, present, and future, including efforts by the Waia'ouli and Keo'ke'a Homestead Associations and future developments like Keo'ke'a Waia'ouli Phase Two, Wa'e'u Ma'oka, Wa'iluku Single Family, Kamalani, and Pule'unui. It's also important to note that water credits for Poku'kalo, A'hu'ko, Hu'ho'noa were initially borrowed from the county. These wells will help repay those credits, reaffirming our commitments to responsible stewardship and valued partnerships. We'll also be taking a look at whether those credits need to be repaid or actually available for the department without repayment. I'm just adding that my own manao on that one. But mahalo for your understanding. We look forward to revisiting this item next month with greater alignment. Okay. Item G2 will.
Oh, yeah.
Item G2 will be moved to tomorrow's agenda. The Commission will recess for lunch at noon. And tonight's community meeting will be at the LAL Elementary School Cafeteria starting at 6:30 PM. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those against, motion carried. Are there any edits or amendments to the April 21st and 22nd, 2025 regular meeting minutes?
No.
Okay, if not, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
So move. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those against, motion carried. Okay, let's start off with the public testimony on agendized items. Let's start with Tiara Colovena.
Aloha, Kakao.
Aloha.
My name is Tiari Colovena, and I just got my lease on the Big Island. I feel that we should drop the blood quantum. I'm here to talk about the bill, the House Bill 451. It stops at my daughter and it doesn't it doesn't follow my grandkids. And with that, I'm very concerned because it passes, it comes to me, goes to my daughter, and then that's it. I feel that the legislature should look at that bill again. And another thing too is it's not even on the agenda, but I think we should drop the 50% quantum of the of applying for Hawaiian homes. As long as you have the kokol, I don't see why that has to be an issue. And that's it.
Okay. No, it makes a lot of sense what you're saying. I mean, Prince Kuil, when he was trying to get it passed, I mean, it was 132nd, I believe, so to qualify, so.
That was in 1924, I believe.
Twenty, yeah. So anyway, thank you for your testimony. Any questions? Thank you. Okay, the next test fire, Gloria Rafael.
Hello.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, it's the first time I'm coming to speak in front of a.
No problem. Take your time.
I'm here because I'm I live in Anahola Village. I'm fourth generation. I have fifth and sixth generation that now live with me too. And believe it or not, they have 50% each. And but they're just not old enough to apply yet. But my problem, my there was, I was upset is I'm gonna say it's gonna be almost 20 years. There was a woman that they allowed to start a camp in Anahola Village called Kumua Camp. So over the time that she was there, the name of the place kept changing. And then I found out when she was a lobbyist, she was telling the senators that she was getting monies from, that she was gonna open a youth academy, which never happened. But this, they were kind of upset after they found out when I showed them this picture, a youth academy that has couples massage. So quick, she took down the sign. But the problem is the road was never paved. And there, if you want to have a picture of, from an old picture. I used to work with the water department for 29 years and 11 months. I had to take care of my father retired because he had gotten COVID. When the governor said to shut down all county or all campsites, she did not close. She refused. I called Kaipu. Nothing happened. The next day I tried again because by then a lot of my family were sick from the COVID. So when I called him the second time, he told me that she told him for me to call Kiipukai Kuili'i. I said, he's a councilman. What is he to this place? Oh, he's the president. Are you serious? So he's the president of this nonprofit, Anahola Homestead Sovereignty Association and a councilman. So as being two-faced. Which are you gonna be? You gonna help our county people that are paying taxes? Or you going for the free money? So I called him, left message twice, please close the camp. Nothing happened. I called police station, did anybody from Hawaiian homes call you to shut down the camp? No. Or how, why can't you help us? Well, county does not have no rules with the Hawaiian homes. Nothing in place. The what? Oh, that's why they can do any kind thing on the property. Yep. Okay. And that's why she can open up the marketplace with no permit? And where did she get that kitchen from? It should have been for the school. The school has a microwave. How did she get the kitchen up there? Oh, we were supposed to share it. Really? But at the same time, on in the campsite, she has, I gonna say like 15 trucks and cars with campers on it. And she knows they cannot go to county camping sites with that to sleep in. So they gotta come down to the village. And they fly down there like it's the highway. Supposed to be 20 miles an hour. No. So I worry is half of the village, we don't have hydrants. Maybe one and a half. We've had three fires in the last 30 years. They just put in one hydrant by this road called Ma'ia. But firemen came, they didn't know that was installed there. So they had to go on the other road, Kamani Road, to draw water out. So I'm asking if anyone can help us here and shut down this camp. We've had people just walk in your yard, take pictures of your home. And it's like, that's how they come to the park. The beach is bad. There's easements that are not supposed to be there, but because she has a camp there all night, everybody going through there all night. Imagine the house on the right, they gotta deal with this dust and back and forth all night. We talking 2, 3 o'clock in the morning. I let my dog go because it keeps them away from the house. They come scared. He doesn't bite him, but. So we have, it could be another lanai. Our bridge is broken five years now. Whose fault is that? I blame Hawaiian homes. Because this is, I have this map here where the subdivision should have been done. But they only did one part of it. And the rest of this, they gave to a man named Frank Cummings. And he ran a trucking company from there. So he would run up and down, plus he had to come up my way with his five-ton tractor trailer going over a two-ton bridge. I called because he would whack wires because he was too low, he would hit them and keep going. So you would have cable company, telephone company coming down. How'd that happen? They'd come early in the morning and late at night. My father got sick. I stayed home and I would get up early to bathe him. The last time before the bridge broke, I heard a snap. And I just got my father laying on the bed and I looked out the window. There was this five-ton tractor trailer with a dozer on it, hit the power line across of the house. And then it snapped and it started to fire. I left my father, I ran across, started to hose down, call 911. Then I see the guy that's supposed to be following the trailer. He sees me. And he's actually supposed to be in front of the truck to make sure that they don't hit wires. He was in the back, but he knows he's seen it. It caused a fire for this house, but did they come back to the lady anything? No. Then the people do that. But now I'm asking, I just found out this man Frank Cummings, he has passed away. If possible, can someone look at this? I gave the representative from Kauai, you see here? I gave you a map.
Yes.
Hoping you would look at it that time.
Yes.
To show you because I heard you wanted to get a lot. I wanted you to see this. But I never heard back. So I'm gonna, you guys can have this map, you can look at it. Or if it's, if it's not, you folks say you should show it to? Or what can we do, please, to help us down in the village? 80% of us, like I said, are homeowners. And most of us are generation passed down. My grandma told me when the queen was taken, she had managed to tell all of them because there's crown lands down there is different. There were one with residential, one with far. And she told them to choose one or the other to buy now because if they don't, we're gonna lose it. And she was right. She was right. The queen was right. My grandma went down the road during the recession during the wartime. Went down the war, went down the road, asked the cousin's husband, can I work for you? So I can buy my place. And he did. He was a cop. But that's how it was before. You would help each other, you know? Even Teddy Williams' dad, Mr. Williams, he owned the store there, it got burnt down. When that was happening, he would buy the land, I mean, buy it for the Hawaiian family. Tell them, you pay me back, no, no interest. You can have it. Some of them didn't even pay him. But I'm asking, please, who puts a camp smack in the middle of a residential place on the beach? You get traffic, dog traffic, we never had before. Now it's really bad. Motorcycles, cars, you can't even enjoy the beach. Fireworks is worse. I pray every day, every night when I hear the fireworks because we don't have no hydrants. Half of the village, which is the half I live on, all the way down to the Smith Beach at the end. No hydrants, all the way up to the school is the first one. So I'm asking the mayor, I try to talk to him because he doesn't know his grandmother when he was sued in the 70s, Hawaiian homes. His grandmother, the senator, she gave monies to Hawaiian homes. And they made a plan in the 80s for take, put everybody on the Hawaiian homes down in the village and across Ela Manu. She paid the money, everything, said if you get leftover, use it for infrastructure. Those people came from America with the plan and they showed the people that lived here in Anahola. And it was beautiful. You had this one, the camp. It would have been the first time Hawaiians would have beach lot. First. I don't see that in Kika. But I'm asking, what can we do? Because I found out she has no lease. She never had a lease.
Do you have any questions, Commissioner Neves?
Yeah, sure. So yes, yes, Auntie, I remember having our discussion. And I passed on the information that pertains to DHHL to the Department. There are several issues here, DHHL issues. There's county issues, fire department. So the only I can say is I can only deal with the DHHL issues. So suggest we meet with the Department and see what we can do about that.
But they don't, like I said, from what the mayor said, there's no agreement between Hawaiian homes and the county itself. I called the mayor, I mean, the attorney for the mayor and attorney, and he told me the same. There's no rules in place. That folks supposed to talk story and make rules?
Yes, and that's what we need to do if we don't have rules. And I don't know if we have rules or not at this point.
Nancy told me. And then I also asked her to look for the plans and the petition that we done, where we were asking not to let her do any of that. But somebody got hidden and then she found it. She called me and she said she found the map, she found the petition. I said, well, can you help us make this right? So all these people that's on this list can get in the house, get a lot. You, the market took one of the residential lots that should have went on the list.
So Auntie, only I can say I wasn't here when this whole Kumua Camp started. When I started on the Commission in 2019, I was given about a four-inch package of what's going on Kumua Camp. And I believe it's on the agenda today. I appreciate your comments and your, but we need to move on. So that'll be coming up in the general, do that. And I'll try to meet with the Department on your issues with the Department itself.
Yeah, what can we do as homeowners to have that camp be turned back over there and make the homes that should have been there?
But I don't know the answer to that. There'll be a discussion, I'm sure, in the future. Once we get through this medal, then we'll have to decide from there.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Auntie.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next test fire, Kenna Summer Gibson.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. I'm here about the status update on projects on Kauai. And found out three days ago at the Hawaii Housing Finance Development Corporation that Waipouli Courtyards is now being purchased with a commercial loan instead of a HUD loan. And so there's been essentially a shift in funding source. Additionally, according to consultants and on the project, the relocation budget is 2.4 million. So my question is, where did that number come from? Because previously it was 1.9, now it is 2.4 million. Again, using a commercial loan is a little bit different, higher interest rates, et cetera. But my question is, how is this 2.4 million calculated? Because residents have been calling every day saying, we're still unclear, when is the closing date? How is our rent assistance gonna be determined? And when are we supposed to move out? That's another thing. Is this happening in phases? Is it all at once after acquisition? At this point, it's been 16 months. And I think it would be good for residents to have answers about how their relocation benefits are being calculated, which has still not been answered by Interwest Group or the consultants on this project. So if that question could be answered, that would be much appreciated by the 57 households facing relocation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. I have some questions about Waipouli. Shouldn't wait till we do the actual island-wide list? Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, the next test fire, Jade Alohalani Smith.
Aloha, Commissioners, Chair and Leah. Thank you for this. Aloha. Hey, I'm testifying on G1 to declare a finding of no significant impact for the Waqiu Homestead Development Master Plan's final environmental assessment for Hana. As a board member and the founder of Waqiu Community Development Corporation, I have been a part of the traffic appraisal, the archaeological hike through the railroad access and the perimeters, and spoken with Kupuna regarding findings of significant impact. However, because this place is so heavily vegetated that I wanna just request that if it produces any significant findings of EV, structure, artifacts, layout, or anything of culture or resources, if we can address the situation at a proper manner or in a proper manner and have the proper protocols and process for this. But I do wanna thank, thank you guys for all the hard work that you guys have done up to this point. Commissioners, Chair, Julie Cachola, Andrew Choi, the G7, 718, and all of our beneficiaries and community members to make our Waqiu Master Plan possible. And sorry if I forgot anybody else, but we are excited to move this project forward for homes in the East Maui Sector and that we really need homes out there. So mahalo and have a great day, everybody.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna start with the agenda. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Juan Garcia.
Good morning, Chair, Commissioners. I would like to make a request, a correction to Agenda Item D5, requesting the removal. Be here. On page two, the removal of Frank Lopez. My apologies, the individual was inadvertently added. However, our applications branch is still continuing to work on the NHQ research.
Frank, Frank Lopez.
Frank Lopez, page two.
Yeah.
But Homestead Services Division again has Items D2 to D14 under the Consent Agenda requesting for the Commission's approval of the 13 Consent Agenda Items.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second. Okay, discussion, any discussion? Any items other than that one noted?
Chair, can I just? Yeah, so first of all, Juan, on Item D1, it gets your page three, we get the chart, delinquency report. We're showing, still showing a pretty high delinquency report at the 90-day, at 180 days verity. There's quite a lot of folks there. It's about a 14, it looks like it's $14 million in arrears. So hopefully we're moving towards some contested case hearing so we can help those beneficiaries straighten out their finances so we can move forward.
Yes, thank you. And again, we will be reviewing D1 later in the day. But yes, Commissioner, I understand your concern. Loan Services Branch is constantly reviewing those contested case hearings or potential cases.
Yes. And then again, in the, again, my comments are continuing from last month and the months before. You know, your department's due diligence in working on the certification of qualified applications. I mean, if you look at that, we have, we have applications here from 1959 that we're still trying to. And I know it's a lot of work and we've given to that direction. And I just wanted to mahalo you and your staff for continuing to do that. And I know you keep saying it's not me, but it's you because you gotta manage it. But the staff's doing a great job, so I appreciate it.
They are, Commissioner. They are working real hard to get that list down.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, any other questions? Commissioner Kalakini?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Hi, Juan, thank you.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Morning.
Morning. Yeah, just some quick clarification for me. For example, like on, uh, Item D5, uh, like Commissioner Nevis mentioned, there were some folks that, um, you know, finally, after many years, we've been able to confirm NHQ. So what happens in the process, uh, once we confirm that? Would they go through the waitlist based on the year that they apply or based on us confirming, uh?
That's correct, Commissioner. It, it's their original date of application.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for that clarification. Just, uh, a couple on Items D10 to D13. So, uh, my understanding is, uh, successorship, uh, you have to be 25% blood quantum. Is that correct, Juan?
Commissioner, the 25% only applies to the lessy spouse, child, grandchild, and siblings. All of the other qualified relatives stated in Section 209 of the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act need to be 50%.
Got it. Okay, so that explains why D10 and D12 has to be 50%.
Yes, yeah, the D10, the mother, um, needs to be 50%.
Right.
And so does the sis, I don't know, not the sister of the lessy, but the.
A niece.
What, which one?
D10.
D10 was the, was the mother.
Right.
Which she's required to be 50%.
Yeah. No, that answers my question. Appreciate it. Thank you, Juan.
Welcome, Commissioner.
Okay, any other questions? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carried.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, the next agenda item, E1, approval of lease awards for Kaulaka High Subdivision Increments to D E N F and Residential Project Lease for Ever Beach, Oau. Colony, uh, oh, Michelle Hitsman. Can I get a, a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay.
Good morning, Chair, Commissioners. Michelle Hitsman, Housing Project Branch Manager, Land Development Division. This is item number E1, uh, requesting to approve the awards for the Department of Hawaiian Homeland's Residential Project Lease for the Kaulaka High Subdivision Increment to D E N F for the applicants listed on the submittal for 99 years. Thank you.
Any discussion?
Sure, I just have a, I just like.
Commissioner Nevis?
A clarification on, on, on the project leases, what, what is the effective date of the project lease? Is that to be determined?
It, it is to be determined. We're, we're, um, in the middle of processing and going through the, uh, DHL internal process. So the AG signatures and chairman, and based upon that, we will determine a commencement date for all of the Kaulaka High to D E N F.
So, so the act, and I don't know maybe if the AG wants to answer the question, but so the actual lease begins before the property is built?
The commencement date will have for the project lease, but when they are assigned to an actual lot, we will amend the lease and that's when their 99 years will actually start. So we'll amend the commencement date at that time.
Very good. You saved my questions for the next four or five, so.
Thank you.
That, uh, I thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, any other questions? If, if not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Michelle. E2?
So E2 is, um, the recommended motion is to approve the award for the Department of Hawaiian Homeland's Residential Project Lease for the Puona subdivision phase two for the applicants on the submittal for 99 years.
Okay, is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, discussion? No questions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. E3?
So this is Item E3, recommended motion to approve the award of Department of Hawaiian Homeland's Residential Project Lease for the Kauai House Subdivisions for the applicants listed on the submittal for 99 years. Thank you.
Okay, uh, let's see, is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Uh, let me just add that, uh, you know, these motions we're doing, uh, involving all these different project leases. Uh, it took a lot of work on the part of staff and, and I personally have to, uh, thank them. You know, one of the things we are trying to do is move the program forward in a very expeditious way. And, um, I got to say, the, uh, staff as a whole has really stepped up and, um, it's doing a real good job. So I thank them for that. Okay, any other discussion or comments? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carried. It's more lease awards.
Finally, it's, um, Item E4, uh, to approve the award of the Department of Hawaiian Homeland's Residential Project Lease for the La'upu Villages 1 and 2 subdivision to the applicants listed on the submittal for 99 years. Thank you.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Chair.
Commissioner Nevis?
Yes, I will recuse myself of vote. I have a relative on that list and I think we'll have enough to vote, so I'll recuse.
Okay, anybody else? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Uh, the next item is F1, approval of annual renewal of revocable permits for the island of Kauai. Kahana Albinio?
Aloha, good morning Commissioners. Kahana Albinio with the Land Management Division. Also, the Kipo Duncan, uh, land agent for the Kauai Island. I didn't remember F1, but yeah, I got Kipo here to also justify the recommendation as drafted. Again, the, the subject item is, um, F1 is the approval for the annual renewal of revocable permits on the Kauai Island, Oae.
Okay, is there a motion?
So move.
So move.
Okay, discussion? Any discussion?
Uh, Chair.
Commissioner Nevis?
Yeah, I just had, well, I had a, a general, uh, question on whether, uh, on the DCCA requirement or normal right of entry DCCA or is there only for specific?
Uh, they're typically normal. I mean, we generally, um, it requires, uh, DCCA.
Because I noticed a lot of them are not compliant.
I know there's some that is, um, individual type.
Right, so there is a clear, the difference between one and the other. Yeah, and my only other, my only other comment is the, uh, item. Uh, let's see, this is, hold on just a second. Uh, the ROE 562, that's where there was a house built on that, uh, property. I believe it was, uh, Norman Cummings was the, is the right of entry holder. And, uh, there is, uh, a comment here about, um, gambling allegations. I, I think we need to continue to keep a look at, uh, an eye on that. Uh, you know, if people want to gamble with their homes and do that stuff, that's fine, but I think a right of entry is, is something we don't want to encourage. So, um, that's, I think we need to keep that separate. We've had some problems in other areas, where, where there's been some gambling and if we, if we're going to do that on right of entries, I don't think that's appropriate. So just my comments, thank you. Thank you for follow up on that.
Yeah, if there's any gambling and if anybody's aware of it, uh, Commissioner or else otherwise, uh, please do and, uh, inform our Enforcement Division, David Hulk. Because we've been, uh, really jumping on stuff like that, including, uh, you know, drug distribution and things that really undermine, uh, you know, the whole situation for a community. So we're definitely getting aggressive in, uh, moving to cancel such type of, uh, leases where they're conducting those kind of activities. The lease specifically prohibits that kind of activity. Uh, any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carried.
Thank you, Commissioners. Item number F2, um, LND seeking approval to issue revocable permits and preliminary approval for a 20-year license agreement to Homestead Community Development Corporation on Anahola, island of Kauai, TMK listed there. We have several members from, um, uh, the Homestead Community Development Corporation here. And then O'Kype was going to sit up here to, to justify the recommendation as submitted.
Okay, is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, we have some discussion. First from the, um, well, you know what, let's, uh, have the witnesses testify first. Okay, uh, Robin or Lea?
Aloha, Mai Kako, uh, Chair Watson and Commission members. I'm here as the Homestead Community Development Corporation Commission Chair in support of this submittal. Robin, real quick, is just helping. She brought some photos. And so she's just helping to get that up real quick.
Do you want testimony first, Kelly?
Yeah, go ahead.
So Kipukai Kualii is the president of the Hawaiian Homestead Association, which was founded in 1982. So we're not talking about a new organization. It's a homestead beneficiary association as defined by the federal government in 43 CFR. Unfortunately, Kipukai lost his father recently and so he couldn't be here. And prepared a, um, memo which I think has been.
Yeah, we had it.
Lea is the Homestead Association's 501(c)(3) arm. It's a pretty terrific project and difficult journey, but one that shows, uh, capacity building. Uh, this is, you're the fifth, the fifth DHHL Director, Kelly, to be involved in this project. It actually, the conversation started with Mica Kane and then Kaulana Park. The problems down there, there's 20 to 25 acres of Hawaiian homelands down at Anahola Bay. And this particular location, the reason why Mica and then Kaulana and then Albert Nahalia were so enthused about this is that location, those lands down there have been for decades, the highest, second, second highest drug trafficking area, uh, on the island. The first was Hanamalu. Um, but unfortunately, so since 1960, uh, there's about 30 acres down there. Uh, Kumu Camp is located on five acres. And in 20, 2009, the Homestead Association went through DHHL's planning program, Kulia Ikanuu, a capacity building program which recommended that Homestead Associations either get a 501(c)(3) or incorporate a 501(c)(3). And so Anahola Hawaiian Homestead Association and HCDC formed HCDC in 2009. The commission, back then, awarded HCDC a rating of four out of five in capa, in capacity. Chairman Park in 2010, um, visited the site, issued and agreed, uh, convinced us to try to deal with the drug trafficking, many, many youth suicides during this time. And so Auntie Lorraine, myself, Kipukai, met members of the Homestead Association, uh, met with them and decided to do it. In 2011, uh, the commission did its Kulia Ikanuu, gave us a four out of five. Then Chairman Nahalia requested to establish the campground instead of calling the police every day to change the purpose, clean up the area of all of its tremendous, um, dumping. My son owns a home in Anahola Village, uh, right there and experienced the tweaking, the, that's a new word for me back when this started. I didn't know what that was. But as the auntie said, there is a lot of illicit, um, activities going on. Back then in 2011, Director Nahalia approved the issuance of a revocable permit. In 2012, Anahola Hawaiian Homestead Association did two beneficiary consultations. So the design and the approach came from beneficiaries from the Anahola region, which is, is how it ended up, uh, being, uh, designed. Again, it was an anti-drug and youth empowerment, uh, project. In 2011, or 2012, DHHL sent a revocable permit approved by the Attorney General. Auntie Lorraine executed it and sent it back. And Chairman Nahalia required that we have a fundraising plan and we match dollar for dollar. Indeed, this commission in 2012 awarded HCDC $70,000 out of a $250,000 regional grant, asking us, wanting us to do Kumu Camp because of, uh, the drug activity down there. Now, there still is tweakers down there because there's 30 acres. We've only been stewarding five acres. And then in 2013, 2014, new administration came in, difficult, challenging. The vibe was very different. But we worked through it. Deputy, uh, former Deputy Director Young, uh, worked with Kipukai and the Homestead Association and HCDC. Even Mayor Cavaleo testified in the EA. Senator Cochi testified in the EA of what a transformative process from the previous, uh, drug infested area. We worked through that with that difficult period, uh, with, um, in 2013, 2014 with the new, uh, Chair, Deputy Director Young even encouraged HCDC to apply under, uh, the Hawaii administrative rules for adjacent properties to turn it into a park. Because DHHL has HR, H A R, rules to do, uh, park. Because it's the only way you can get rid of the drugs. In 2015, the department made a big change across the state. Kahana might remember when RP's never used to have to have an environmental assessment. That's a pretty big expense. But it changed. HCDC did not complain about it. Aha did not complain about it. They raised the money. They executed an EA. And that's when, uh, they were very positive, um, Manao submitted to that. It was attempt, the EA in, in the end of 2015 came before the commission for Fonzie. It got deferred. And then in January 2016, uh, the commission, uh, approved it. These were difficult years in that administration. The vibe had changed from, uh, supportive to, uh, difficult. But that's okay. That's, that's life. And then in 2017, because of the EA, the EA recommended a special kind of septic system. So, uh, HCDC contracted, raised the money and installed a, uh, fully approved SMA septic system certified by the Department of Health after 18 months of engineering and, and construction. And, uh, former Director Isla came out to Anahola. Sorry, couldn't find the picture of that, but it was a kind of a happy day. So the current campground has been operated pretty success, successfully. So I just thought I would show you a few, uh, photos. This is just a standing slide. I don't know if I, do I do it or is somebody else? What's that mean? Oh, okay, okay. Thank you, sir. I'm a boomer generation. I don't. Okay, so this for, oh, sorry, this is the first slide. This is Kekeha. HCDC built this community center in partnership with the West Kauai. We only do projects in partnership with Homestead Association. So at the same time that we're doing Kumu Camp, we built this out in Kekeha. Go ahead. This is Kumu Camp. So donated yurts from the charter school, uh, from, from private folks. They're basically though, um, those little windbreak bamboo campsites. Go ahead. The pavilion, which was part of the requirement that we were required to give to Chairman Nahalia, uh, Costco kinds of, uh, items. Go ahead. There's an outdoor kitchen. I think these are, some of these are your Papa Kolea kids, but youth, there are hundreds of youth that come to Kumu Camp every year on a regular basis from the inter-islands and even from the continent. Go ahead. Volleyball tournament annually, there are twice anti-suicide volleyball tournaments. This one happens to be a night or the ones in the middle are nighttime. I mean, it is greatly used, this, this campground. I, I'm not involved with it anymore. I'm an Aha member. I used to be at HCDC, uh, but that baton has been passed now that I'm in my 60s. Go ahead. Uh, emu, there is an emu down there, uh, the kids use. Uh, this is mostly used by family reunions. Hundreds of family reunion folks around, uh, Hawaiian reunion, reunions, frankly. These guys happen to be from Kekeha. Go ahead. The charter schools, Ohe, Kapala, uh, printing up there. This is, uh, Kumu Camp sending Anahola youth kids to Indian country because they came to Kumu Camp and so they went to Colorado. Go ahead. This is the Indian country kids, uh, This is the Indian country kids at Anahola. It was kind of a cultural exchange. So fifteen kids came from Colorado. Go ahead. Lakota. And then when the Hawaiian kids, youth kids went to Colorado, the whole community put on a whole powwow for the kids. Go ahead. This is probably my favorite photo experience of our kids, well behaved, amazing ambassadors from Anahola Homestead to the American Indian groups there. Go ahead. They learned how to put up a teepee. That was fun and awesome. Go ahead. And then other projects are the Anahola Marketplace, which, I don't know if you want me to do, do you want me to just go through this very quickly, Cully, or just? Okay, so Anahola Marketplace with a grant, a HUD grant, we didn't build it. UHRC, RCUH built the Certified Kitchen and whatnot. We're dealing with wonderfully with Richard Hope to go back and do things that RCUH at Universal Point didn't get done. But go ahead. It was a certified kitchen. It's, it has folks using it. For the most part, Anahola Marketplace is refurbished shipping containers, turned into little retail spots. Go ahead. There's a, every weekend, there is fellowship, wine dancing, local artisans, et cetera. Go ahead. Thrift shop. This is, this came from the Homestead Association wanting a thrift shop. So there is a thrift shop at Anahola Marketplace. Go ahead. It's more like a boutique to me. For Molokai Commissioner, the Hoolehua Homestead came to the Anahola Marketplace many, many, many times. And so they asked HCDC to write grants to figure out how to get a shipping container. So you see it on the left, Commissioner, and then it got painted by Hoolehua. And now they have a nice temporary meeting space in the Hoolehua Homestead. So we, HCDC provides operating support, insurance, et cetera. Go ahead. Youth Center, one of the first HCDC projects was to build a, an Anahola Hawaiian Homestead Association project was to build a youth center here. The kids are renovating it, painting it, upgrading it. It's up at the Anahola Park. Go ahead. That's what it looks like on the outside. That was one of the first, that was a federal grant by HUD. Senator Enoi was very involved in that and it will be opening up again for the summer. Go ahead. The final kind of projects that HCDC does, which has plenty of capacity is, this was the first B simple apartment complex that HCDC bought with First Hawaiian Bank and Federal Capital Magnet Funds to, because this property was on the market and would have been sold by an investor to another investor and therefore the rents would be high. So these are rented at eighty percent AMI. The last two vacancies that were at Hali Nani, right downtown Lahui, went to native Hawaiians on the, on the waitlist. Go ahead. And then last year on Maui, HCDC acquired three properties, totally nine rental units, excuse me, eight rental units to provide housing, temporary housing for the line of fire victims. Small footprint, but the homestead doing its, its part on the island of Maui. Go ahead. This native Hawaiian family that moved into one of them, that was their home on, on Front Street, on the top left. That's what it was after the fire. And so they're living in an HCDC temporary rental while they rebuild. And then this home will be part of the Paris Program, the Permanently Affordable Rental Unit Strategy that will then rent Maui County has invested four million dollars into HCDC because of this work to do more acquisitions and to designate rental housing permanently. Go ahead. Kipukai is working on a, you know, visioning and planning with the West Kawai Hawaiian Homestead Association and the Anahola. Along with G seventy, we helped, Lea and I helped raise pre-development capital so that they could do visioning for a sports club and one-bedroom studio rental units in Keikaha and in Anahola, if that ever comes to fruition. And I think that's it. But I'll call your attention in the memo to the, to the third page, which gives you a pretty good year-by-year approach to Kumukamp. I think Kumukamp has probably suffered more misinformation than anything. And it's unfortunate because Kara Chow, a Koi girl, most of our staff, it hired HCDC employee seventeen staff on the island of Koi. It's unfortunate that people should just call up or email questions. But I'll quickly run, it's probably had the most misinformation. It's not bringing drugs to Anahola Village. It's deterring drugs from Anahola Village. We're either gonna call the cops or DHL's enforcement team is gonna have to have a full-time presence down at the county park, all that thirty acres there, or you've got to issue, Cully, to homestead associations, the opportunity to be stewards and the opportunity to be self-sufficient in bringing solutions to these problems. So again, this is five directors that it has survived and jumped through every hoop. I do want to say, in twenty-twelve, the Anahola Hawaiian Homestead Association did it, did beneficiary consultation twice and then gave a report to DHL. But we were just entering into the dark period of negative vibes, whereas before we were very much encouraged to do that. So we've just kept plugging along on this. The very design of Kumukamp came from the Homestead Association members, not the open public, I'll, I'll admit that, but from beneficiaries in the region. But what's amazing is that Kumukamp was a collaboration to address drug dealing that was killing our kids, that is still, drugs are still killing our kids. It was a collaboration between, beginning with Mica and Kaulana on what can we do, really? And it became a collaboration. We can replace the purpose, a low imprint, impact campground. In fact, Land Management Division told our Homestead Association, you cannot limit occupancy at this campground to just beneficiaries. It has to be available, which was a right thing to do. And so they complied. Not only was it a collaboration of right of entry, revocable permit, this was the plan, and then a license sixteen years ago. It was a collaboration of capital, seventy thousand dollars DHL invested in Kumukamp getting started. All volunteer cleanup, all volunteer development. In that dark period, our regional grant got canceled. So DHL never paid the final seventy thousand, but that's okay. Nobody, you know, we're just gonna keep trudging forward because the Homestead Association remains as different administrations find their way. So you can see that, got an SMA, got a cultural survey, got a environmental assessment, that is major. Then DHL did its own consultation, that came to the commission. Was it smooth sailing? No, of course, as you heard from the auntie, there are people that don't really understand what the, what the origins of the campground were. And I think I'm really super encouraged this year and last year, Cully, because I don't think our homestead has had such an amazing relationship with the enforcement division. Your enforcement unit, those guys are a different vibe totally. I mean, what's not on this, Cully, in twenty-nineteen, right above the twenty-twenty-four, the department's enforcement division arrested me, handcuffs and all. Not related to this, but because of a homeless Kanaka, a homeless beneficiary. And so that was an experience for me. I've never, that never happened to me. So, but we have to learn. We have to have grace. We have to have grace for one another. We have to have grace for moving forward, going back, moving forward, going back. And so I really like what Kipukai drafted here because it tells a wonderful story of pain and joy, but success. I think that after sixteen years, I haven't looked at the financials, but after sixteen years, I believe that I could say for Lea and Kara and Jordan that the campground is finally getting to a place where it doesn't need operating grants to function. And so that, thank you for the opportunity to present the reality of Kumukamp. Nothing is black and white. It's not like the prom king and prom queen where you vote. You know, there's, there's warts here and there, but I'm proud as an Ahaha member, as a lessee, as a waitlister, that this project made it through, made it through and is providing an excellent service down there in the anti-drug arena.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to say anything?
Yes, I do. Mahalo, Cully. This, it's, this memo from Kipukai, it's, it's hard to read for another, as the Chair of HCDC, but also as Executive Director of the Papakalea Community Development Corporation. And what's painful about it is our story in Papakalea is very similar. Similar timeline through similar administrations, similar types of requirements that were required of us to get a land instrument tool. You know, there were some activities that I did not go through that I am appreciative of. But some of, a lot of the similar requirements of a homestead beneficiary association. And as you know, Cully, I've been with you, meeting with the department, with the former Chair and their deputies. And, you know, having, having a similar experience where we've done the work, we continue to do the work, we find the financing, but for some reason, for some reason, the land tools are not placed on the agenda for action. And I don't know what that is, but I will say this, that I'm very appreciative that under this administration and under your leadership, these types of, these activities are being put on the agenda. We're given a chance to present it to the commission and we're given a chance to move forward. This is ten-plus years and I'm not, I'm gonna say it one time, so I'm not gonna say it when my agenda item comes up. But it's ten years that we've been doing the work, doing the work, finding the financing, doing our work on our own. I mean, in some cases, I almost feel like the department should be paying us for being the steward of the lands. We should be sending you an invoice because we're out getting the financing running in place, trying to figure out how we're gonna get all of these elements funded, but we don't even have a RP. We don't have a license. We don't have a right of entry. I mean, it's, it's kind of like, it's a little mind-blowing, but, but thinking, you know, but the good thing is we're here. We have an opportunity to get a land instrument in place and we will continue to steward the lands as Prince Kohio knew that we could. He had, he had full faith in his people that we could steward our lands the best. And that's a fact. And so it's hard as a homestead beneficiary lessee and as a community leader to constantly see our lands held in trust being leased out to non-Hawaiian entities to do business. And they have requirements within their license and their instruments that are, that are not nearly as restrictive as ours are. I mean, it's kind of, it's a little mind-blowing, but I guess that's just part of our history, isn't it? And we will continue to move forward. And so again, I thank you for allowing us to speak before you, present it today. It's been a long time coming, fifteen years and mahalo kea kua. I guess it is true, right? Sometimes we just have to be patient and it will happen when it's our time. So mahalo.
Thank you. I don't know about sending us an invoice, but you can submit grant applications,
And I thank you.
which you've done and we've responded. Anyway, Kipo, you wanna kind of summarize action item?
Aloha Commissioners, Kipo Duncan, Land Management Division. So what we have before us today is to approve a temporary revocable permit for HCDC for them to comply with a few things over the next six months or so. And after they come into compliance, we would like to go for the twenty-year license agreement.
And that's the compliance issues listed on Exhibit B?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Questions, Commissioners?
Chair?
Commissioner Nevis?
So I joined the commission in two thousand nineteen. And about a month later, the department gave me this big giant thing and said, Kumukamp, what do you want to do? The department, the department. Right. Wherever at, it was a dark period, about four inches in this book they gave me. What do you want to do? And after I read it, I said, what do you want to do? That's your responsibility. There, there's been, and, and now I figured out, we didn't have a commissioner for a year and a half. This split the community. This issue, this one issue sort of split the community. And it's still split and we both understand that. And one of it, as Ms. Raphael brought up, is that should have been all house lots. So that served a little stab in the heart. But I understand there was a drug problem and we had to take care of it and Kumukamp was allowed. The, the, the problem is we've been operating without an instrument. So now we're gonna give you an instrument. So what I want to ask you, Robin, is what don't you like about this instrument?
Ah, thank you, Commissioner. For Ms. Raphael, I agree with her. And there's twenty-five acres down there. There are three acres in front of the million-dollar homes that they are using as sprinkler systems to rent their homes as VRVO for ten thousand a week, not a month, a week. So there are, I agree with her. There are plenty of places to put residential and I would put them right in front of those million-dollar homes that, that are beachfront. So Kumukamp is five acres of thirty acres. Thank you for that question. What I don't like about some of this stuff here is don't treat your beneficiaries and your homestead associations different. If I can get a beer at the De Bartolo Mall, I should be able, the family reunion guys that come from Keikaha, I don't want to put up a sign that says no beer. It should be responsible and in keeping with local, state and federal laws. We shouldn't be punitive. That, that's the first thing. The second is, mo, most of this I agree with and we can do as long as it's not, like doing a, we're gonna start counting cars because car traffic isn't from Kumukamp, it's from Lahui. That's who's all driving crazy on our beach and causing, hey, havoc. I would like Exhibit B to require us to engage with the enforcement unit, even though we are having the best relationship ever with the, with Cully's enforcement unit, David Hope and Kip Akuna. We'd like that to be put in there, that we want an agreement with them so that we're working even more closely. The thing I also would like the commission to amend or contemplate, that I understand from talking with staff and talking to Linda Chin, Cully, that you're moving toward a, hey, homestead associations, anybody with a license, you have to give us your financial statements. When I asked why, because HCDC, Lea gets audited financial statements, why, the response was so that the department can contemplate license revenues to the very beneficiary organizations that this land trust was meant for. So I think that should be pulled back and that the department should think and it should run an Excel on all of the RP's and licenses, that if you implement that policy, what is the impact? Does that mean only homestead associations have to, are gonna, are Does that mean only homestead associations have to, are gonna, are gonna start getting charged with licenses? Is KS, are the, are the charter schools, which are currently gratis, are they gonna have to be? So I just think we should do it in a thoughtful way. I'm a banker. I, I, I agree with, uh, good, um, revenue setting, but it shouldn't be chaos. It shouldn't be here, there. We should have a policy. And then bring it to the commission to adopt that policy on how rents are going to be set, rather than reward and punish, uh, it issues, um, on, on various, uh, because I think homestead associations, homestead nonprofits will be the ones that are targeted. That it won't be, uh, non-native, non-beneficiary, uh, organizations. So Kipukai did comment on that, that this license should be gratis and put a section in the gratis section that the HHL has the authority to amend that, to amend that gratis. Once you get a, uh, a pricing policy so that because out there in community beneficiaries think there's one rule for one group of people and there's another rule for another. So let's not go there. Let's set up the policy and I'm happy to sit on the committee that proposes what the, uh, process is. Um, and also he communicates that, look, Kumu Camp is about deterring drugs. It's about land stewardship. It is not a commercial project. It was a painful project and they barely break even, but to have a presence, um, so it's not a commercial project. That's not, that's not the heart and core of it. And I, I think the second thing that he commented on was the requirement of financial statements. Clearly HCDC under, uh, Lilia's board leadership, they've had audited financials since twenty eighteen. You saw all the projects that they're doing, but I would pull back on that and say, subject to adoption of commission policies on pricing. Um, let's take the time to do it. Let's take the time to do it right.
So I, the way, Chair, sorry. So the way I understand this is you're looking to at least have, uh, the use of alcohol, supervised use of alcohol and, uh, work with our enforcement department.
Require it, please.
Uh, and then look for some kind of policy on this, this, uh, this requirement. I, I guess some of the, some of the issues some people, uh, are concerned about is, is the, the, the revenue from this and not just for nonprofits, this is for every organization, whether it be, uh, beneficiary, in my mind, beneficiary or non-beneficiary, is how much are they putting back into the community? And I know that Kumu Camp is just starting to break even, you're barely getting there, but.
But as a, but as a nonprofit, they're required to put one hundred percent back into the community.
Yes, and I, and I agree that there's not a defined policy. So I think that, that the permit fee of twenty dollars until we get a defined policy, and if you want to be involved in that, I would encourage that, Chair. The, the security deposit.
I've never seen that before.
In my mind, doesn't make any sense because the security is your equipment that you have there. It's already there. So I would, I would look to, to reduce that. The, the processing fee for those documents, I don't know what that takes, whether that's a big deal, one hundred seventy-five dollars.
That's standard.
That's a big deal. We can maybe waive that. I, I'd suggest that we remove the deposit, uh, maintain the fee of twenty dollars until we define a policy.
Yes, sir.
For how we're gonna deal with the financial statements and, um, and also take out the one seventy-five. Let me just add that, uh, you know, it, we really need to reach out again to the community. I know we've had a lot of beneficiary consultations. Uh, there's a lot of things that I've seen on, on the film that, you know, I'm, I don't go to Kuma Camp every day. I gotta deal with my own camp at my house. Um, but, but it's, it's really reaching out to folks saying, hey, come and experience it. Come on and, and hang out with us. Uh, there's, but there's been some things, a- and, and we, we both know it from the department side and, and from Kumu Camp. You know, we, one day we go in, all the trees are torn down and then we say, hey, who's, what do we deal with the horrid vat? I mean, we have a lot of issues, okay, that people are sort of shocked by, but I agree, that was a mess and there's areas down there that are still a mess. And there's probably areas that we may, uh, that we should be able to develop for homes if we want to develop for homes, but then there'd be a surge issue and so on and so forth. But, uh, you know, as Ms. Raphael brought up, there's, there's a lot of issues we have to deal with the county as well to make sure that's straight. I'd just like to get it fixed. I mean, now I know that why there wasn't a commissioner for a year and a half and I got nailed with it. It's, it's a lot. But so, but we can, it can be fixed. It can be fixed. So I think we need to reach out. Part of the, 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 those last items of, and B is to reach out again with beneficiary consultation. Uh, continue beneficial consultation. This is what's going on. How do we communicate to the community that we have events and so on and so forth?
I love the requirement, Kali, of your team about, it says, we shall do beneficiary consultation on any expansion and we'll have our archaeology. I think that solves the problem. It's perfect. Uh, this project has suffered a lot of misinformation because it's in a tough, it's in a tough neighborhood and drug dealers and they're, they don't want to leave. And so I had a young man, Dennis, come and apologize because he admitted that he flew a, uh, drone over, you know, and then made up uh, a website, took a picture of it, sent it to Kipo and DHL. This was in the dark period, the dark few years and spreading misinformation that it was a commercial operation and it was doing boating on the river. It was all, but it, but he had came to admit to me that he was trying to stop it because it was a very lucrative drug dealing location and it kind of cramped the style. So I think we keep, uh, doing it. I, I agree with you on the, on the pine trees, we need to remove the pine trees eventually. The proper native plant for that area, and we did a cultural archaeology and history, is Laualala. That is the proper plant for Anahula Bay. Um, and so we're gonna start to redo that, but totally appreciate uh, the comments. I don't have any other, um, yeah, uh, I agree with the Exhibit B items and would like to, uh, except for the ones that I, that, that I noted. So thank you so much, Dennis.
Welcome. Well, Chair, I'd like to make an amendment to the, um, proposal.
Sure.
That we remove, uh, item number three, the security deposit. And also remove item number four, the, uh, documentation fees if the department's okay with that. And then, um, I think everything else is okay. Once we, uh, also to, uh, uh, the, the use of alcohol, uh, we need to come up with what, you know, we, I mean, that's, that's something that we have to, the department, I guess determines how much you can use. I don't know how you guys deal with alcohol, but we have to make sure it's compliant.
I don't drink, but I can hear Auntie Myrna.
I do at my house, but not at Kumu Camp.
I can hear Auntie Myrna from Keikaha when they do their annual thing and they, they can't have a Coors Light. If it's against the law, okay, but don't put something on our people that you don't put on other people is my, is my point. And we've never had a problem. Go ahead, Lilia, sorry.
I just wanted to speak to this because I took the Papakolea kids to Kumu Camp. We had a fabulous time. I mean, fabulous. Half of the kids that came with us for this Whoukati had never been to Kauai. And so it was eye-opening for them. But let me tell you that, and I'm not just saying this because I'm the HCDC Chair. At the time, I was not on the HCDC Board. Um, but as a parent and as an administrator of an educational program, I, I thought, oh boy, might be drinking. Nobody was drinking because it's families, but I will tell you who was consuming alcohol and illegal drugs till all hours of the morning are the people who drive on the beach. The residents or the people that go over to Camp Faith, or the residents who've, who've been going on the beach every night to fish and party or what have you. Now, that was concerning to me because at night I really had to watch the kids because the speeding on the sand, um, you know, there were activities that were occurring on the beach that was not on the property.
Yeah.
That was concerning and not having enforcement, whether it's on behalf of the county, who I believe it's their jurisdiction. There, no presence, zero presence. I mean, so that's what I'd be concerned about is it's the alcohol consumption from other individuals on the adjacent property. So that's, yeah. Oh, okay. So it's their response. Okay. Um, so that would be my concern, zero, zero enforcement on site.
Okay, um.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Made a motion to amend, uh.
Yeah, second. What, oh, oh, hold on. And one other, one other thing is item two, is that the fee be gratis? Until we can figure out all this other stuff and I'll give Lee a list.
Is there a second?
There's a second.
Okay, all those in favor of the amended motion, say aye.
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 Okay, motion carried regarding the amendment. Uh, how about the, uh, motion to approve the amended motion as a whole? Is there a motion?
To move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carried.
Commissioner, I just wanted to add real quick to hence the, I think the, um, Auntie this morning had mentioned about the MOA between the county and, um, DHL.
Yeah.
I think that's really important too, because like Lilia and, uh, Robin had mentioned about the vehicles going on the, on the, on the beach. I think that's a county that we need assistance with in, in enforcing.
Yeah, but that, that's not gonna be part of this amendment.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Hence the, you know, what she had mentioned about having an MOA.
Yeah, that's gotta be definitely, because we, we still have a bridge to repair. We have, you know, people speeding, access.
So I just wanted to point that out, the importance.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Kali.
Okay, okay, next item.
Item number F three. Land management is seeking the approval of payment plan for General East Number Two Seventy-Five. Uh, Dips Hawaii LLC Hawaii Limited Liability Company. With us, uh, today, I have a couple of the team members. Um, you, you wanna come up?
Mr. Watson, yep.
And Pumai. Um, again, the, the LMD is seeking the approval of payment plan for General East Number Two Seventy-Five. Again, to Dips Hawaii, who Keone is the, uh, president of. Um, you guys got any questions for Keone?
Would you guys introduce yourselves, please?
Uh, Alika Watson from, uh, Hol Holdings, County Four from Dips Hawaii. And Omifraid is from, uh, Huiho O'Lako.
Okay, you guys want to say something?
Yeah.
Hey, go ahead.
Aloha, Mai Kako. Aloha, Mai Kako, um, to the commissioners, Chairman Watson, thank you for the opportunity to be in front of you to have the review of the approval of the payment plan for General East Number Two Seven Five um, at Kauai High, um, for the BioChar facility or our carbon capture, storage and utilization platform. Um, I wanna share that is with great thanks that this is a consortium effort of native Hawaiian businesses, um, for profit and nonprofit and the focus of self-generating power, the deployment of BioChar and specifically focusing on workforce development in these trades. And we're grateful for the opportunity, um, to have a two-year payment plan. So a warm mahalo and aloha to all of you for reviewing it.
Chairman Watson, uh, commissioners, I just want to say that, uh, we're very favorable if we can get this to your, uh, department, payment plan, because it gives us time, even though we all own our own businesses out there and Hawaiian businesses and we're all beneficiaries of DHL. Um, it's a startup company and we're taking over a dormant facility that has so much potential for the people of Hawaii that with BioChar, and a lot of people don't know what BioChar is, but we don't have to import fertilizer no more. It's a great subsidy to put into land that turns dirt into soil, so we don't have to worry about fires, controlling wildfires out there. Uh, and it's, it's, we can use it and we're developing to do it on the carbon market because Hawaii is one of the biggest pollutants out there with carbon. Since we ship everything to Hawaii, we fly all our tourists to Hawaii and, uh, all our burners, our petroleum is all carbon based. So as we develop, develop these carbon credits, we can take advantage of all the pollutants and bring more money into Hawaii. What does that do for us? It helps develop some of the plans that we have here for Hawaii and not only for Kauai High, but we can take this and help DHL with some of their fundings for infrastructures down the road so that we can provide funding for you guys using all these carbon credits across the state of Hawaii on all DHL land. Providing cheaper, uh, hydrogen fuel that we're developing here and we're, we're testing it in, uh, California right now. And soon we'll be de- developing it and showing it there in Kauai High.
I wanted to add that, um, the self-generating proponent of, of our Hawaiian endeavor, our carbon capture, storage endeavor, um, is our, our belief and our strong belief that Hawaiian should be the first to touch deployable hydrogen fuel to power. And so the first commercial system would be a launch point at the, at Kauai High, at the port of Kauai High. Also stressed that being at the port is a critical part of our decarbonization effort. There is already existing fifteen thousand tons of macadamia nut on site that is intended to be converted into carbon. It is our full intention to tackle that mountain of, of fifteen thousand tons of macadamia nut, which is about a two-year supply. Um, that we would, it would take about two years to go through that. Um, the deployment of that BioChar is, is, is a means via through carbon credits to be able to offer the BioChar back to, um, agriculture, back to native farmers at no cost to them because of the carbon credits. So because there is a ten-year, um, back order in the durable carbon market, um, by moving forward in this payment plan that gives us an opportunity to put full focus on, um, the deploy minimum credits that we may come back dollars and four hundred seven thousand dollars back to the county by utilizing the carbon credits to make this a successful site. Um, by doing so, it also allows us to deploy the carbon at no cost back to the farmer so we can focus on water retention, nutrient retention, fire mitigation. I have before us some samples of gorse that in, in effort to, to macadamia nut show, we would like to be able to also address some of the gorse as a feedstock and take this and convert it into carbon that could then be deployed right back into those sites to help mitigate fire. So we just see so many positive benefits from this, but the biggest one would be workforce development, career pathways, establishing high skilled jobs, labor for those residents that are living in the Kailaka Community Association, Avi, Kapo'ao, Waimea. And so we can't, we can't build this capacity without growing and building people. So that's the hallmark of this is by focusing and drawing from the talent pool within that community to drive these measures. So, um, very grateful to, to highlight those key components. It starts with an amazing staff and a well-trained workforce. Okay, mahalo.
Did, you want to say anything?
They covered it all.
Oh, okay. Uh, any questions or comments?
No.
Yeah, I have a quick comment, sure.
Uh, yeah, I had a question on the, uh, you were mentioning the gorse. We have a lot of gorse. So we'd be more than happy to give that to you guys as a few gorse.
I get it.
But how would you process that? How would you go harvest it?
Pumai can speak to that from Huiho O'Lako for Hawaiian Initiatives, which is one of the nonprofits that is slated there. And I, I do want to add that Dipsoi has been, is a native Hawaiian business from YNI. We've been in operation for sixteen years. Um, we have been dedicated to decarbonization, carbon capture, storage and utilization. It is our wheelhouse. Ag Energy Hawaii would be a newly formed startup that would replace millennium carbon. So instead of focusing on activated carbon for semiconductors and ultracapacitors, Ag Energy Hawaii would be stood up to specifically focus on BioChar for the benefit of agricultural lands, water retention and of course fire mitigation. Um, Huiho O'Lako is a native Hawaiian partner from Hilo that has already begun the process to work, um, with the gorse and millet down Pumai, if you don't mind sharing the process.
So in, uh, twenty, oh, my name's Pumai Freitas, uh, President of O'Lako. I've sat at these meetings for years and years and years. Uh, if, uh, we established a relationship with the HHL in two thousand twenty-two, I believe, with, uh, House Bill two thousand one, two zero one nine. We have got the the animal feed project, gorse to animal feed project. So we've been working on that since then. Um, and with this endeavor that we all work together, we're able to, uh, move our, our project into Kauai High. So we developed a way where we can grind the gorse down with, uh, zero mitigation and zero spread of the, of the gorse, so we can take it off the mountain. We've been doing that since two thousand nineteen with approval from DHL and County of Hawaii. We've been doing that since two thousand nineteen with approval from DHHL and County of Hawaii. So we've been, we've been working on it back and forth for about four years now. That is how we would take the gorse off the mountain, or if not, we would deploy on the mountain and make BioChar on the mountain also.
I see that byproduct that's created, uh, how, how is that done? I mean.
So there's a grinding method.
Ignorance, but I'd like to.
So we take the gorse, we, we uh pluck it out of the ground. We, there's a grinding method we use through hammer mill process. And from there it goes and it cooks into a reactor. A reactor will turn it into BioChar. And what else we do is we take whatever that's extra, we take.
When, when you say BioChar, what does that mean?
That's what you have right in front of you.
So you, you take the gorse, you put it in a grinding machine or something?
Yeah, we take it, grind it. The, the first step is a grinding that, that um, that mitigates all the seeds. So all the seeds are, are nicked and punctured, so they cannot regrow.
Right.
From that point, we, we can take it and we can make animal feed and we can make the BioChar. So all the everything we harvest off the mountain, we, every so much um every so much tons we take, we take samples, we send it off to Oregon State University to seed lab to confirm that uh there's zero growth.
So there's no like uh, it's not like a digester that creates some kind of methane gas, or is that what it is?
No, we're actually using gasification and prolysis. So the carbon is created, and I wanna answer your question of what is BioChar. Uh, BioChar is very close to activated carbon. So we're very familiar with carbon as it's in our water treatment, it's in our, it's in our Brita filters, it allows for toxins. I mean, many cases, macadamia nut shell BioChar is as a highest tier durable carbon, something like medical charcoal that could be used to um pull toxins in that. So it's a very high-grade product. Why we bring the gorse is because macadamia nut would be the highest threshold that would have a durability of a thousand years deployed. So the deployment of BioChar is a generational um deployment issue. So when we put BioChar in the ground and we can put upwards of five to ten tons per acre, and it's not limited to one time, you could come back, have a favorable result and deploy another um five to ten acres. The durable carbon market for macadamia nut, assuming Hawaii is the, is, it's a cash crop for us, it's our large agricultural waste stream. Um, we're able to attract upwards of nine hundred dollars in carbon credits per ton. And those are your polluters, that's your Hawaiian airlines, your Microsofts, your Googles. So all of the intention of, of um of burning carbon, the polluters, they would use BioChar as a means to offset that, those behaviors. So what we have, Millennium Carbon as it stands, has the highest durable market. And that is enough to show success, but I think by focusing on other additional feedstocks such as the gorse, that would be a lower tier where this might have a durability of a hundred years. But it does come down to a feedstock. Um, we are focused on not, if we're doing sixteen tons per day at the Kauai High facility, if we could also bring in other types of feedstocks like bio solids from wastewater treatment, mulch to combat rhinoceros beetle, we can all convert that into carbon. Um, but to that point, carbon is, we're very familiar with carbon um when it comes to our filtration um and, and how we clean things up. So bio remediation has a very high impact, but we're focusing on deployment into the soil structure, so we can focus on water retention, nutrient retention, and ultimately combat fire mitigation and, and, and have a threshold where we can start to rebuild generational soil. Think that's the key piece here, and that's how it can really impact our agricultural lands.
So, I just saw understand, this, this is the uh what do you call it, gorse?
That's been the gorse that's been milled to a specific piece. So in Pumai was saying, that's been destroyed. So that, that one baggie that has the gorse in it is, is sterile.
It's already been processed.
Yeah, it's been sterile. That is the end result of the carbonization of the gorse.
And this is what you mix into the soil.
Yeah, that's what would be deployed directly back into the soil. That is correct.
Okay, make, make the soil more usable.
It make the soil more usable and the current durable carbon market, the gold standard market is providing that for the polluters, we are able to secure anywhere between five hundred to eight hundred dollars in a carbon credit per ton.
Yeah.
But in order to receive that, it has to be monitored, verified, reported that it was deployed back into the land. So what is, what is important is that if your feedstock is coming from your landowner and it's being, the carbon is put back in the landowner, owner's property, we can actually verify, report, at that point, it comes closed circle and then the credits are activated.
So you sell the credit or you make revenue off the sold credits and use that to run your operations?
That's correct. So we, we generate revenue off the credit, but it's the deployability back into our island soils.
There's a dual benefit.
I wanna highlight that Hawaii is not able to participate in the BioChar market currently because it's at a cost of ten thousand dollars for ten tons to import it. So currently, if we wanted to import ten tons of BioChar from the mainland, it's at a cost of ten thousand dollars. So we're actually burning diesel and fossil fuels to bring the BioChar here to do this.
Okay.
Our intention is by being at the port of Kauai High, we can deploy from port and then redirect that to support all islands. But is Maokona and Kauai High is a launch point for this carbon deployment for our generational soil health.
Okay, uh, we do have uh, any questions from the uh commissioners?
A quick question, Chair.
Uh, Commissioner Freitas?
Uh, thanks. Uh, Commissioner Kelly King.
Uh, you gotta unmute. Or.
You guys hear me?
Yeah, now we can. Thank you.
Good, thanks. Now Commissioner Kelly King and I had a chance to tour the facility. Uh, definitely really impressed. I think a lot of things. Their core focus fits into a lot of things going on now environmentally as well too. Just a quick question. Um, I do know we met with you folks, there were some financial challenges at the time you guys mentioned. Um, are you guys okay with this payment plan? Are you, is there something you folks feel that you guys can handle? And also, is there anything we can do from our side to help you folks?
Um, greatly appreciate that question. We feel we're thrilled by that payment plan. It gives us the opportunity to not only recommission the plant. Um, in moving forward, I don't know if it's in the exhibit, we have acquired the bill of sale purchase agreement of the plant. Um, that's how we got to this point. So we are now actually in possession of all, Dips Hawaii is in possession of all assets on site. Um, it's the carbon market, the pre-sale of carbon where we're able to come in and pre-sale carbon because they're ten years back ordered globally. And so it's the pre-sale that'll allow us to get the runway to be able to make these payments. If we're able to expedite these payments, uh, we're, we're thrilled to do so. Um, but it is the fact that we don't have any carbon to be deployed here, and this is a launch point. We have feedstocks well beyond um our capacities. Sixteen tons is not nearly enough.
We got a lot of gorse for you guys.
We got a lot of gorse.
We got a lot of gorse.
And so what we'd like to do is we'd like to bring this to scale, which is why we decided to make this BioChar. You know, Pumai did it in a five gallon bucket, just to highlight um the capacity, but we'd like to be able to appoint to address gorse anywhere from six to ten tons per day.
Sure. Mission ever, yeah.
Yeah, I just uh, you know, my, my experience with the airlines, I'm familiar with carbon credits and all the big polluters are trying to buy credits, so they, they uh, they can operate a little more safely. And um, to have a plant here on the islands, like you say, instead of shipping, you know, stuff in, is really gonna be a advantage. And then be able to get the gorse off the mountain, get, get the BioChar back into our soil to enrich our soil and keep the nutrition, nutrients. It just, you know, you know, it's a, it's a done deal. Sounds like a great deal.
Thank you. I wanna, I wanna add that it's the carbon credit itself that can help fundraise the capacity to tackle this problem. It's a very expensive problem. We're hoping that the, that the, the carbon credits can in essence be a part of the means to help pay for the ability to mitigate this problem. I think it's.
What, what's the status on the carbon credits? Uh, you know, with this Trump administration, they're moving all over the place.
Oh, it's a very favorable time right now for us to be doing these. That's right. And so also the fact that we are a native Hawaiian um entity.
Oh, they don't like that, but.
Well, I was gonna actually say and highlight the fact we are, Dips Hawaii was on the Hawaii Pacific Hydrogen Hub. Um, Hydrogen is having a really big play here, so it's not that we are not, we, we are on, we are the native Hawaiian entity participating in that. Um, this effort at Kauai High was our focal point to, to demonstrate that. And to a certain degree, that is made in America par, native Hawaiian, American par, and they do stand.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
We do have a, 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 any more commissioner questions? Commissioner Kelly Kenny?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, uh, thank you gentlemen uh for that presentation. Yeah, and uh, so uh, like Commissioner Freitas mentioned, we had a very nice uh uh visit with these folks over at Kauai High. Um, very exciting to see how this progresses, and I would like to suggest that we ask for an update. Uh, if this goes through, look for an update uh at the next meeting in Waimea in twenty twenty-six.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the commissioners?
Yeah.
Commissioner Kalepa?
Yeah, good morning. I just, um, a couple of things here is um, I'm looking at in two years, the four hundred and two thousand um payment. And um, what is your annual uh income with uh this product?
So this particular site is attached to um Act one nine eight, Senate Bill twenty-eight sixty-five, which Governor Ege signed into law in July of twenty twenty-two that authorized special purpose revenue bonds of forty million dollars to support Dips Hawaii to build a net zero carbon capture, storage and utilization platform. This site at Kauai High is the byproduct of that DHHL testified in support of Act one, Act one nine eight, which was Senate Bill twenty-eight sixty-five. We have till twenty twenty-seven to take advantage of the special purpose revenue bonds. We feel that the forty million dollars is more than adequate, and that's why we're moving at this pace to be able to support that heavy lift.
Well, awesome. And then my final question is, this is a native Hawaiian org um, uh, company that you guys, and are you guys uh leases in Hawaiian homes?
Yes. Donald Ford is my dad. He's behind me. He is the, Don, Donald Ford and, and I are the fifty fifty percent owners of Dips Hawaii. We're not diluted. Um, Dips Hawaii as it stands right now formed and owns a hundred percent of Ag Energy Hawaii. Upon the acceptance of this approval, we hope to share all of the Ag Energy Hawaii will be a collection of native Hawaiian ownership with Alika Watts, Pumai Freitas, um Charlotte Poiley Foundation. Um, so it is, we're wanting to form, Ag Energy Hawaii is formed to be a combination of native Hawaiian um beneficiaries and owned, and owned company. But as it stands as of right now, Dips Hawaii has formed and owns a hundred percent of Ag Energy Hawaii. Um, we are a native Hawaiian company. We've been doing business here since two thousand nine.
Wow, amazing. Awesome. Thank you.
Uh, any more questions? If not, we do have uh one public that's uh, uh witness, Jojo Tanimoro?
Thank you, Kali. Um, yes, I have a couple of complaints. Number one is DHHL has not come to the community. And so it's on an agenda and nobody else knows about it. And that's normally how the department is treating Kauai High. Now, I've been there from the beginning and it used to be an energy plant out there and we've had great um camaraderie ship with these people. And I understand that this company could help DHHL. But there is nothing that says they're gonna help our community. And uh, number one is water. So it costs a lot of money. And nobody is addressing how they're gonna help so that we can get water out here, drinking water. The other thing, my concern is, and maybe they can uh explain to us, we would rather have a meeting with these people, and so I'm asking for a meeting so they can explain and the department because they don't wanna come over here. And especially I have talked about this company in the regional plan for the last couple of years and nothing, okay? So we have um goats and animals and we even gave a cement company right in front of this place that's going to be using this lot. And the department cannot um control even the dust that fly across the highway. Number one, you cannot see visual line in the middle of the highway and the dust goes inside the houses across the street. And these guys are next door to that cement company and I'm trying to figure out what kinda enforcement the department is gonna do there. The department does not say anything. And even the goats, the goats still come around. Uh, the other thing is, besides the benefits, what are we gonna get in the community in Kauai High? And besides work, um, what else they gonna give to us? The Millennium Carbon Company was gonna help us get a water line across Monopour ditch and send us water to the community of, of Kailapa, which is in between two gulches. Now, I don't hear anything about raising the amount of um the fee to Hawaiian homes, neither do I see anything towards helping the community, neither do I see anything about a meeting to meet with the community. I kinda like that it is going forward, but in the regional plan, the newer that you guys accepted, there's a residential um subdivision supposed to go up there. And you got us across the, the gulch, and you got those guys up down the, uh, across the highway on the oceanfront. And nobody telling us about the gorse if this is gonna be enclosure, so that we don't get it in Kauai High. I mean, it's already a problem up Monakel, so uh Humula, so we don't need them in Kauai High, and neither do we need the pollution in our ocean. It's already erosion that I've already talked about, and these people, how they gonna help uh with the erosion? And the trucks, they're gonna go up and down that highway. It's only a two-lane horse town. And uh, the master plan, not even part of anything. So it's like it came to the commission. But it never come to us and we have all of these questions that we need to find out, especially for another department. They don't like talk to us. So, and look, he sitting right there, he still will call us up and let us know what's going on. So we can use a lot of help. And this company might be the key. We don't know. You know, and I, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can, can I, can I address um her, her concern? Okay, go ahead.
Hi, Auntie Jojo, this is Pumai Freitas. I just wanted to let you know that uh, when Millennium Carbon was there, uh, we had, and we kept Kailapa at the forefront for us with um the community outreach. Nothing has changed. The only thing has changed is that we hundred percent Hawaiians running this company this time. And a community gonna get a lot more say in what's going on this time around.
Can, can I just add to that?
Good.
The former company Millennium Carbon is from New York. And uh, we just acquired access from them for this plant. March thirty-first, I think it was.
Uh, April second.
April second. So we just started getting, now we have the keys to the kingdom and we are starting to do all the things that we have been planning for the last two years for. And we do have diagrams and plans to send water to Kailapa. We didn't think it was appropriate to talk about it here. But because we have a well and we also have an RO system there that we can send pure water up to Kailapa and reduce the cost to them too. And also, we're looking at all the wells that are over there and using some of our generated funds to help run those wells, because it takes energy to run pumps.
Correct.
And we have five megawatts of energy that we can produce right now, today. Petroleum base, eventually we wanna convert that over to hydrogen and run the pumps, everything. So, I mean, I, I can tell you the truth. I went to the, I was number twenty-three out of twenty-two to get a house at Kailapa. So I almost became a resident up there, but there's still hope for me yet. Twenty-three out of twenty-two, I was the last guy and I was devastated, but you know, we, we, there's still hope. We, I'm still wanna get up there and we wanna do a lot of things for Kailapa. And when we talk about some of our plans and helping the community and building community center, you know, we, we talk about, man, I, I'd be, I would love to build a community pool over there. A swimming pool for all the kids. It's hot up there and, and do the best. And with our BioChar and everything, it's soil that we can put into the soil up there. So you guys will have nice green grass. And i- i- our plants are, are are so dramatic that we wanna take care of the people of Hawaii very, very, very much. It's and that's our, our biggest plan up there. And Kailapa's been on our plans for a long time.
I knew you guys had the key. This is Jojo. I knew you guys was a key to our generation that we need in Kauai High, but we just never got any communication until just the first time we even hearing about it. So thank you very much. I've been there from the beginning.
And Jojo, thank you for, for your, for your um, your comments. And I wanna add to that, that I went to Auntie. Jojo, thank you for, for your, for your, um, your comments. And I want to add to that, that I went to Ante Gina Kulu Kukui and Shauna over a year ago and discussed many of these, um, options and these topics of discussion. Water reclamation being a highlight of that and of course, providing power. And our focus on providing hydrogen for Hawaiians is in a direct attribute to exactly this conversation. Um, we applied for the Department of Energy National Renewable Energy Laboratories Cohort Five. With the Kailapa Community Association in mind, we submitted that. Um, last year, we have been recommended, um, to proceed this year in another application. Uh, Wai and I was awarded in Cohort Four, as was Maui. Um, they asked us to come back and reapply in Cohort Five, addressing Kauai High in twenty twenty five. So I will say that we went to Kailapa Community Association first because it was our charter that we wouldn't all take on this endeavor if we didn't have a community worth fighting for.
Fantastic. Yeah, but see, that's the problem that we got, right? Uh, you talking about an association of three people. We're talking about the community. The community never knew nothing about it. Even you guys went to the association. There is nothing going around the community. So I'm asking for the community to get to meet you guys so you can explain this to all of us that live here because we don't know anything about it. So thank you very much.
Like to, uh, kinda look, take a look at is, uh, we also in our tasks and are looking at, uh, the water situation and, uh, I didn't know about this well as well as this five megawatts of energy you guys got to play with. So I have two guys back there, Ray Kana and Kalani Franda. Uh, looking at the different ways to provide the water. So talk to them because, you know, what you guys are talking about might, uh, maybe we can collaborate and work, uh, together to get that water to these guys. These guys are paying way too much money. We actually made a subsidy uh, to, uh, make it more palatable for them, but it's something we have to address. So I'm glad to hear. Okay, why don't we, uh, take a
Well, let me thank you very much.
Jojo, thank you, Jojo.
For the hydrogen, the electric.
Uh, Commissioner Freitas?
Let's make a motion, please. Uh, but before I do that, I'd like to just, uh, just say thank you to, to these folks, um, from Dibs and ask Dibs, sorry, and ask them to, uh, continue to work with the community. And also maybe I'll, I'll reach out to Senator Richards and Representative Tarnis to, just to kinda keep them in the loop. Uh, so I know Senator Richards is also looking at potential water options for the region and maybe folks can collaborate on things. Um, but that being said, I'd like to, um, uh, do a motion for, to support F three, please.
Well, um, just one last comment too. Um, the target's on you guys now. So by May thirty first, on twenty seven, we get that big payback, um, in, in revenue.
Okay, any other discussion from the commissioners? Okay, uh, let's, uh, have a motion.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Appreciate it.
Motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
You guys want to speak? Get some energy there, man. Uh, let's see. Okay, what's the next item? Um, F four, approval to issue right of entry permit to Habitat.
Yep, two more of those, uh, commissioners. Um, approval to issue a right of entry permit to Habitat for hu- humanity to use DHL lands at the Kaina Lot, Wamanalo Wahoo, uh, TMK listed there.
Okay, any questions on this one? Uh, if not, uh, entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All those, motion carried. Next item.
Item number five, um, subject is to approve the right issuance of, uh, right of entry to Papa Claire Community Development Corporation in Puwaihano Wahoo Island, Wahoo Island TMK listed in the submittal. I also have Lilia, um, who would like to testify. Give some.
Okay, you wanna say a few words?
I have nothing to offer. I think my comments I shared earlier really applies across the board. Uh, but again, thank you, uh, for bringing this forward. Thank you for providing the grant funds um, so that we can conduct the due diligence to support the community development projects that came out of community. Um, this is an exciting time for us. I'm not, I'm not sure if I shared with Shelley, but PCDC also was awarded three hundred thousand dollars from Climate United. Um, at the same time when we submitted the submittal to conduct due diligence on the parcel and to, to implement climate resiliency type activities. So this is an exciting time for PCDC and, um, it's timely. We've now have the funds to finish the master planning, complete the due diligence and to really get this project started. So I thank you all for your support. Um, and I'm open to answering any questions if there are any.
I, I just really wanna recognize the two, um, land agents who, uh, helped with the submittals. F four was Ashita Bono and F five here is under Shelley Carrera. Just wanna make sure I acknowledge there.
Hmm, okay. Uh, any questions, gentlemen?
Yeah, I mean, um, I want to, yes, I'd like to strongly support this project. Um, Lilia and, um, Papa Clea has done an excellent job in working with the community and with this project. And I am confident that they will be successful. Thank you.
Hey, any other comments or questions? Uh, if not, uh, entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carried.
Good work, good work.
Okay, next item, G one. Declaration of finding no significant impact for the Waqiu project in Hana. Andrew Choi.
Aloha Commissioners, Andrew Choi, Planning Program Manager. Um, item G one, the recommended motion action is that the Hawaiian Homes Commission issue a finding of no significant impact declaration based on the final environmental assessment for the Waqiu Homestead Development Master Plan.
You wanna give a real quick summary, just real basic? For the benefit of some of the people.
Sure. Um, with me today, we have, um, Jeff Seestrom from Group Seventy, who would give a brief summary of the, uh, final EA and Waqiu Master Plan. Or if he's not online, oh, right, okay.
Apologies, yeah, I'm online.
Go ahead.
Seestrom G seventy, Senior Planner.
Go ahead, Jeff. You can walk through the presentation.
Aloha Commission. Uh, basically, this is a update for the draft EA that was previously presented to the commission in January of this year. Um, the purpose of the presentation is to review the updates from the draft EA comments that we've gotten. Um, the goal is to, uh, uh, request an acceptance of the final EA with finding of no significant impact. And, uh, with the next step being published, uh, the final EA in the environmental notice on ERP in June twenty twenty five. And there, the last step would be a thirty day legal challenge period, which would then end in July twenty twenty five. So the wa- the DHHL Waqiu lands, six hundred fifty-six acres out here in, um, East Maui, has transferred to DHHL as part of the nineteen ninety-five settlement between the state and DHHL right across the street from Hanahai Elementary School. So there's two parts to this, um, this, uh, action from DHHL. The first is the master plan, assess existing conditions, working with um, our consultants and the beneficiaries to ideally identify what's the best vision for this homestead community in their own words and their own expertise. And combining that with studies we, um, commissioned to get the best existing conditions assessment. Um, is identifying with the beneficiaries, the type of homestead lots, sizes and layouts with a land use map and a table of land uses with acres and lots. Um, this leads in from the master plan to the EA, which is required by the state, chapter three, four, three. Um, this would evaluate the proposed master plan on the potential impacts of the plan and identify mitigation measures to lessen those impacts. So the previous, uh, draft EA that was published, um, that was presented to the commission was published in March of twenty twenty five with a thirty day public comment period. That ended on April eighth. And the comments that were received were incorporated into the final EA and this is what requires, uh, commission's approval. So I said before, over, uh, six hundred and fifty-six acres, four parcels, um, if you're familiar with Hana. A very strong community with, uh, many traditional practices, um, agriculture, hunting, fishing, uh, Ma'aka de Makai, uh, many multiple generations, four to five generations uh, have been forced into staying in homes that are there. There's definitely a need for housing. So right now, there's overcrowding, uh, in the existing houses that are there and even many family members, um, had to leave East Maui, even going, uh, to the continent in some cases. And this is a, a story that we heard, um, multiple times through our beneficiary consultation. So in the consultation process, it was very thorough. We started, um, in November of twenty twenty-two with, uh, the local homestead, um, Waqiu CDC. Uh, visited the project in February twenty twenty-three. And then the Onuia Kea process in February, uh, we worked with, um, the beneficiaries there and identified Kapu Kanavai, um, as the cultural foundation to this master plan. Uh, we then invited beneficiaries residing in Hana and Ha- and Haqiu to participate in the three planning workshops that ran in, one in September, uh, the initial vision elements that resulted in the shared values and beneficiary goals. Uh, workshop number two, we actually did a design shirt in October twenty twenty-three to identify uh, layouts and land uses and had voting by the beneficiaries on these land uses and design concepts. Uh, resulting in four different, uh, land use plan alternatives. And then workshop number three in January of twenty twenty-four. Presenting the four land use plans that were refined based on what came out of October, uh, workshop and voting on the preferred Ma'aka and Makai options to create one final, uh, master plan that was shared out in the final workshop in April of last year. Uh, that was brought the beneficiary participants back to gather them and get comments on the final master plan. Uh, it's kinda just a little bit of a brief review for the Onuia Kea process, um. We worked with the Ithaca Nahuole Foundation to look at the different Oli, Ka'au and Mele of the area. Looking at natural systems, taking the raw data, um, from the ecological side. You could Kuna, resource managers, the farmers, fishermen, et cetera, that are there and get the relevant information and current information if we did not have that at the time from those that actually lived the land and worked the land. So Kapu and Kanavai, Kapu are the sacred, or sorry, the natural elements are so important that they're held sacred and cannot be changed. And the Kanavai is the guidelines, protocols and laws that utilize Ika Kuna to live in harmony with the conditions, the uphold, the principles that are caught. Um, so how to apply these indigenous place beach approach to manage these critical resources. Um, and that's how we worked with the foundation or found the, provide the foundation that Ika Kuna. So based on that, the shared values that came out, um, Aina, community, cultural practices, restoring the Aina, protecting the natural resources in the Mahali. The final homestead development plan that was born out of the countless, um, workshops and iterations is what you see before you. This is refined one more final time for the, the final, it did not change. Um, in terms from the draft date to the final, uh, just working on some of the graphics and provide a little more um, you know, possibilities. Again, this is, uh, an EA is a disclosure document, so this isn't the final, final. There's still has to be further, uh, work down the road, but this is as, as a master plan. This is the vision that, um, the community has worked towards with many of the community based uses that you have some public, uh, interface closer to Hana Highway. Um, community gardens, schools, food truck, um, perhaps some commercial, all those types of uses to keep um, those not in the community closer to the highway. Then you have a greenway as, uh, parkway as a buffer. Then you start getting more into the community. Um, you have the traditional residential homesteads, um, subsistence egg and, um, cooling on a lens. And here's a kind of a brief table of the different types of uses, lot sizes, and these are based on, um, on the beneficiaries preference in terms of the size of the lot, so three acre, the one acre. Um, what they wanted in terms of non-residential, um, some of the sustainable energy, like having PV and lands that aren't easily used, more Ma'aka. Um, having conservation lands for the existing hollow groves that are there. Um, and having, as was shown before, the community uses are closer to the, to the Hana Highway. So we received eighteen comment letters during the draft EA comment period. Thirteen from agencies, five from individuals, um, for flora and fauna. Uh, US Fish and Wildlife requested we check, uh, from their, the official federal list and it, uh, concurred with what we had, um, on, in our flora fauna sections and our biologist that went out. We did receive some, uh, comments from individuals requesting prioritization of, uh, lot preference award by lineal descendancy. And that was referencing what, uh, the agreement was on Lenai. Um, and as, um, I think Andrew's been spearheading this, uh, this, we responded that although it's not part of the scope of this project, there is an ongoing, uh, administrative rules, a review that um, is in process that I think, uh, early twenty twenty-six was the, uh, target for providing some updates for that. Um, there were neighboring landowners that had comments regarding, uh, access and clarification on property boundaries. So we did work to, um, clean up some of the maps just so there's a better, uh, description and visual, uh, clarity on where DHHL lands versus where versus, um, adjacent uh, landowners and also want to provide assurance that anyone that already had an existing easement for access would still have that, um, access honored, uh, in the new master plan. So we, we worked to make sure if there were any discrepancies that, uh, those connections were noted that they would still be provided. And the, one of the big, uh, agency letters we were looking for was from the Department of Water Supply with water being, uh, an issue on Maui in particular, but, uh, throughout the state. But in this case, they did concur with the water estimates that we had for consumption for the lot. So they, uh, these are the first, first phases and our initial projections, they are okay with the amount that's projected. Um, the thirteen criteria significance for three, four, three. Um, and we'll go through them all, but this was all addressed in the draft EA and, uh, confirmed for the, the final EA. Um, and, um, we, if you wanna see more of it, it's in the final year in, in chapter six. It covers each one of these, uh, criteria of significance. So, uh, the conclusion from the, working with the planning department is uh, the project will have no significant impact on natural human environment and EIS is not warranted and, uh, Looking for a finding of no significant issue for the project. Timeline, um this is the, as we mentioned, going through the. Consultation period to the draft year as presented uh. In March to now, we're in the final EA presented and then publication would be June uh next month. Then, next steps after the EA, um working towards, there is an adjacent. Railroad parcel that runs um right in between s- some of the DHHL parcels, we're working with the landowner. And that would be um not for development per se, but that's where the greenway and 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 green belt was. Uh suggested by the beneficiaries, um in phase one of the engineering design work would begin. Um and both depend on DHL receiving and allocating significant funds for these act. Contact information for Julie and our team are below.
Um that concludes our presentation.
Okay, I I had a couple of questions. Um now I'm looking at your layout, the master plan. Uh I noticed that you have the residential uh lots at one acre. I mean, that's huge. We we don't do uh those larger residential. Anymore because of the cost of infrastructure, especially at that size of a lot. How did you come up with that? I mean, I know everybody wants a real big lot, but from a practical standpoint and realistic. Why why did you guys go with one acre?
Um Chair, the one acre lot size was specifically to tr- deal with wastewater. Um there is no. Municipal wastewater system in that area. Um one acre lot size was to accommodate individual wastewater systems, which is the Department of Health. Minimal lot size standard for allowing um.
Oh, it's for the leach field and all that.
Correct.
And but there is sufficient water.
We did not get any comments from the Department of Water Supply that a new source would be required. But we have to follow up with them on uh those conversations. In water development, the first thing you do is uh prepare environmental assessment and conduct a Kapa'akai analysis, which is what this is. And then the next step is to follow up with the re- uh respective municipality on a water credit agreement. Through this EA process, they did not uh communicate to us that a new source is needed for this development.
There might be sufficient.
That's what we're hoping.
Yeah. Okay, and then on the others, um well, and I noticed you got it spread out. Uh most of the uh residential is close to the Hana Highway, so the idea was maybe development to start. Closer to the highway, then move backwards. Ma'aka, is is that kind of what you guys are suggesting? Or I guess that's up for the developer.
That that's correct, uh based on conversations with um our civil engineers. Uh and also working the beneficiaries, I think. The reality of getting funding for everything all at once, it it's easier to work from uh where all the utilities and everything starts. Off Hana Highway and working way back as funding and resources are available.
Well, you got uh a variety of things on this master plan, which is great. Uh it is a pretty big development. Uh. Just kind of wondering, one of the uh obvious objectives of our of this administration is to get the. Uh project leases out. Uh was it your feeling that there was real strong support? For the, within the community for something like this?
Yes, this is all uh directly from um the Wa'ku CDC and the beneficiaries that attended our workshops. Um we pulled them uh and had them provide their feedback directly. Either on the plans themselves, we did um physical workshops where. You had different pieces at scale, so they could see, you know, the sizes of the different land uses. And they could see where I worked and it was a pretty good mix of different community members that had different backgrounds and skills, so. They were the ones that kind of pointed towards the uses they wanted. And not, maybe not all were used per se once we did the exercises, but the majority that worked um were what you see in the plan now.
Now, I know this uh basically is a finding of no significant impact, but uh I guess. Not a concern, but you know, I'm wondering if there's any kind of anticipated monkey wrench that we, if we were to proceed with our. You know, project lease award program, uh do you guys anticipate anything that might? Pop up that might undermine our uh and maybe uh cause some problems for our lease awards in the future development?
Um well, we have no crystal ball and can't predict with certainty. Conducting an environmental assessment does provide the opportunity to look at all of the constraints of the land. Also do community outreach, beneficiary consultation, consultation with the respective agencies to put this project on the radar. We haven't received any significant comments from during any of these engagements, so we do feel that the probability of not. Running into a monkey wrench is higher, but again, I've been at the department for a while and I know there's always some sort of. Monkey wrench, but based on the due diligence that we've conducted through this master planning and EA process, we feel like we've. Tried to identify all potential constraints or potential unforeseen um. Activities that might um put our wrench into things, but we do have what we feel as a comfortable. Um estimate of um reasonable estimate of potential lots to be awarded in the future.
So should we go for it and?
Can I add that um you know, the average price of a house in Hana is like one point two million dollars or something? It's ridiculous and the overcrowding conditions is because there's no housing supply, you know, and. Um people have had to leave, so I think that was really clear that they needed housing supply and that this was going to. Um address that issue.
So my question to Andrew and you Julie, should we go for it and start making lease awards?
I think that would be, that would be great. That would be so great for Hana.
Yeah, they would love it, right? Especially with the linear descendant award approach.
Yes.
Any comments, Commissioner?
Uh yeah, I'd like to comment. Um you know, I'd like to thank uh Jeff, Andrew. Julie and and Jade from Hana because you know, this um, this concept. That actually came from the community really is the foundation, I think, of any project. Whether it's housing, whether it's um. Um water, I think this is it. This is um the kind of concept that we need to adopt. And will minimize the chance for um any kind of um concern or pushback. This was truly driven by the community and to see that and knowing Hana and how tight that community is. You're getting ac- uh accurate input from that community. And these are the kinds of things that I think we need to um adopt. These concepts for future um developments. For uh for DHHL, w- well done, you guys, and I look forward to seeing. The community in Hana have Hawaiian homes so that um. They can stay there. The cost of living is outrageous, the 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 shopping. You know, they gotta travel over sixty miles just to go shopping and it's it, this is really, really awesome, really, really um great. The way this was handled and um look forward to seeing this um through. So thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, any other comments?
Sure, I've got a, just complimenting Andrew, Julie, your team, working so hard. And as Commissioner Kalapa says, the Hana community and the association over there. Does their homework, they show up, they're active, they appear to be very responsive to you, Andrew and Julie. While you're out there looking for answers, they're vibrant in their approach and enthusiasm. They're not just sitting waiting for something to happen, but that they're out there being very aggressive with it. Chair, when you talk about about leases, absolutely, absolutely support that.
Yeah, I think so too. Um it's, it did talk about uh this uh railroad easement. We need to do a appraisal and boundary survey. You guys anticipate any kind of problem with those guys? Or can we uh?
Um the landowner actually reached out to us and is interested in um.
Working with us?
Yeah, working with us and acquiring it. They're just telling us, hurry up, hurry up.
Okay, uh any other comments? If not, uh can we have a motion?
So move.
So move.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Andrew.
Mahalo, take care.
Okay, uh uh agenda item C one, for information only, status report uh from enforcement. David Hope.
Let's go, David.
All right, David.
Morning Chair and the Commissioners, uh David Hope, Administrator for the Enforcement Unit. Um this is just our monthly update from April fourteenth through May twelfth. Uh during this window, we had twenty-five requests uh for investigations. Thirty reports were submitted, uh bringing the total request for the calendar year to sixty-three and total number of reports submitted ninety-seven. Uh during this window, we also had eleven eleven official correspondences to our um beneficiaries, so that's. Can be pertaining to some kind of lease violation, window to remediate, something to kind of. Uh hopefully get them to engage in um remediating the issue. A couple of other things that happened during this window, uh we had a very. Good and and productive meeting with the new director of Department of Law Enforcement, Mike Lambert. Who actually, um I believe, will be addressing the commission next month. Um he has some exciting news, uh some some plans that he's really um taking the department's safety into consideration. So looking forward to him coming to talk to you guys. Um and then we also uh started. Taking on some of the contested case hearings for the department. Um I just want to acknowledge our legal assistant, Casey Corpus, for that because. Um there's a lot of, you know, tedious work that goes into it, um you know. Being kind of new to it, I didn't realize the amount of time that goes into it, so I got to acknowledge uh all her hard work. And um something else that, you know, we kind of happy to happen over this last period, um since the eviction memorandum was lifted. In addition to our unit looking for the um abandoned or unused houses, we started. Going back to those homes that were previously canceled and trying to make contact with the individuals, see what the status is. And um you know, there's twofold, either work with them or start working towards getting the writ. And um it's it's a difficult situation because it involves a family, the lease has been canceled, it's a very sensitive thing, but. Um within this last window, we were actually able to get two homes back into inventory, so that required us. Contacting the family, working with them, convincing them to kind of move out on their own, giving them that time to find a home, but. Also taking some of the burden off of the already taxed AGs from having to go get rits and go through all that process, so. We're gonna continue to do those and and hopefully we can get a handful back without having to go get rits and do it. Uh handle that situation in as respectful manner as possible. And um again, I just want to acknowledge my team. Another big thing that we've been really pushing is the beneficiary engagement. As you see towards the end of April, um the last week or two, there's a lot of. Uh meetings and and engagements that we went to, most of these happen after hours or on the weekend, so. These guys are taking time away from, you know, free time, family, and so I really want to acknowledge them for, you know, making that sacrifice. Because again, I feel like the beneficiary beneficiary engagement has been uh the game changer for us. That's the only way we're gonna be able to stretch our resources, get the information as quickly as possible, really motivate the. The neighborhoods, the neighborhood security watches, associations to be as self-sufficient as possible and um really keep it as safe as possible. And yeah, that's it.
Any uh questions or comments, uh Commissioner Kaneko?
No, just comment to you, David. You and your team are so aggressive and and with care. You know, you don't just go, you know, barreling down the way, but I've seen the way you work with families, the way that you take community. Into account, the way you work with the homestead associations, um this month. You, I shouldn't have been surprised that you and the team were over at Wa'manalo uh trying to educate that uh. Community Association, the Homestead Association, and I think that they're they're realizing how powerful you folks are. And the fact that you take the time, individual time, you go meet with lessees, you try to. Find other ways, and when there is no other way, when we've exhausted everything we can do, then we go ahead and work toward uh canceling leases. But you guys are gangbusters. All of you folks got a new admin in there that's added some real muscle to it. So thank you so much.
I appreciate it.
I have a question.
Okay, Commissioner Archie Kalapa.
Hi, David. Yeah, thank you, thanks to you guys again for all the work that you guys do. I would like to um. You know, on the total requests received since uh last the middle. Twenty uh since twenty-five, is there a breakdown for the places in Oahu, Maui, Kauai, uh East Hawaii? Is there a breakdown for uh what communities that is coming from? Can can that be provided in the future?
Yes, I can do that in the future. Yeah, and then just to kind of clarify with the directly to or from EU. So those ones have been cases uh based off of the vacant home initiative, so those are when. We're kind of out, we see homes that could possibly be vacant, and um that's why that number is so high. But um in the future, as far as the requests that do come in from our uh various divisions, I'll get a little bit more specific about what homesteads, so um. Everybody can see that.
Yeah, that'll be more helpy helpful for me as a commissioner, just so that I have an idea of where these um these are. Thank you.
Okay, will do.
Okay, there is uh some public testimony from Pat Hawa'ola.
Aloha, my Kako, can you hear me?
Uh yes, we can.
Oh, okay, uh I I I just want to also uh thank David and his staff um. Who responded quickly to a uh issue with Kupuna and um the. Subsequent uh these communications that began uh with uh. The, uh I'm trying to find the correct, I'm just trying to be politically correct, but it's the. The homeless situation that we're having on a piece of property that this commission spoke about. Uh in trying to and just uh awarding a right of entry, I'm assuming for that renewable energy here on Railroad Avenue. Uh for the that um biofuel and these people that supposedly. Going to build this re- renewable energy plant, but the use now by our homeless people. And the uh contamination or possible contamination, because there is no place to defecate or urinate. Uh in there and the uh I was able to get um a drone. Uh view of it and the response from David and or uh. Uh it's uh now the community policing officer and area commander here in Hilo, um. Uh Lieutenant Dur, so uh I I wanna commend David uh for responding and uh at least keeping the. The uh community involved uh informed of uh, you know, no, tell us what you're doing, just. Tell us that you got our communication and and you're looking into it, but I appreciate that uh all of them, uh David, Tip. And and all those that continued to do that. So again, uh that was my uh thing to to at least let the commission know that uh these guys are doing uh. Job, their job. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Uh the commission will convene in an executive session pursuant to section ninety-two dash five eight four HRS. To consult with its attorneys on questions and issues pertaining to the commission's powers, duties, privileges, immunities and liabilities. Have a motion.
So move. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. We're gonna recess for lunch also. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for attending.
Okay. The commission is reconvening from its executive session. The commission discussed its powers, duties and liabilities related to permitted interactions of members of the commission. Okay, the next agenda item is C two for information only is summary of legislative session twenty twenty five.
Aloha, ana koumikina, oriana lea kouyinoa, Nahaz the Government Relations Program Specialist here to present item C two for information only. Summary of Legislative Session twenty twenty five. The Hawaii State Legislature, next slide please. Appropriated funds to the department in the state budget reflected in HB three hundred, HD one, SD one, CD one. The legislature authorized funding for FY twenty six and twenty seven and included eighteen million thirty two thousand two hundred and thirty four dollars in general funds for fiscal year twenty six and the same amount for FY twenty seven to cover the department's existing personnel, administrative and operating costs. Next slide please. The legislature also included ten million in general funds for each fiscal year for planning and development for Hawaiian homesteads and twenty million, next, oh, that slides correct. Twenty million in CIP funding for FY twenty six for repairs and maintenance to existing infrastructure on Beris Hawaiian homeland statewide. A chart highlighting the budget information is attached as exhibit A. The Hawaiian Homes Commission, as you all might recall, approved twelve legislative proposals. Next slide please, to be included in the governor's package for the twenty twenty five regular session. Following this approval, the legislative proposals were reviewed by the Department of the Attorney General, the Governor's Policy Office and the Governor. And six were included in the administration's legislative package. Three of the six legislative proposals were passed by the legislature. First, we have, next slide please, HB four two two, HD one, SD two, CD one. It repeals the construction cost component of school impact fees, exempts government housing developments, affordable housing units and projects, and yes, Hawaiian homelands housing from school impact fees. Requires the school facilities authority to adopt rules governing fee collection. Increases the minimum number of units in a development to trigger land dedication provisions of the land component impact fee. It requires a report from the Department of Education School Facilities Authority to the legislature on program efficacy and it sunsets on twenty twenty nine or in July, on July twenty twenty nine. So currently, DHL is exempt from school impact fees via the governor's emergency proclamation regarding affordable housing. This allows us to continue to be exempt until twenty twenty nine. Next, we have HB eight seven one, HD one, SD one. This bill clarifies that Act one thirty Session Laws of Hawaii twenty twenty four, which amended the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act, takes effect on the earlier of the date of the Secretary of the Interior's notification letter that Act one thirty does not require congressional approval or on the date that the US Congress approval becomes law. Again, there was an error in section four of Act one thirty that passed last session. So this bill just corrects that error. Lastly, we have HB ten ninety one, HD one, SD one, CD one, which requires a county to accept within sixty days after receipt of a completed application for maintenance requests, license or dedication of sewer transmission lines and related sewerage facilities servicing Hawaiian homelands that are brought into compliance by DHL. As we all know, DHL currently has and manages sewer transmission lines, many of which that are in compliance or are currently being brought into compliance have not been transferred to their respective counties. This bill ensures that they will be within sixty days. Now, there were a number of resolutions that also passed, the first of which being HR fifty four, HR fifty eight, also known as Senate Resolution one one five, requesting the Hawaii State Energy Office to convene a geothermal energy working group to evaluate the regulatory and policy landscape surrounding geothermal energy in Hawaii. This working group includes the Chair of the Hawaiian Homes Commission to contribute information and recommendations. Next, we have HCR seventy eight, also known as Senate Resolution sixty, declaring the intent that projects with housing units that qualify for housing credits under Act thirty one Session Laws of Hawaii twenty twenty four are still eligible to receive housing credits after the repeal of that act if the housing projects were approved by HHFDC before July first, twenty thirty one, and requesting the corporation and each county to include certain information when approving housing projects for housing credits. So this one obviously applies to us and reaffirms that. Next, we have HR one four seven, establishing a legislative working group for the continued oversight of the Department of Hawaiian Homeland's execution of funds appropriated by Act two seventy nine Session Laws of Hawaii twenty twenty two. To date, DHL has presented in six informational briefings. I personally participated in three. This resolution ensures that they will continue. It also changes the members of the working group. Next, we have SR one one four and Senate Concurrent Resolution one three five, urging all state departments to partner with the Office of Wellness and Resilience for secure and appropriate data sharing agreements. As we know, data aggregation continues to be a necessary part of the state and its work, so we're included in that. Lastly, we have Senate Resolution one three seven, requesting DHL to develop and implement a water access pilot project demonstrating the Kohala region's capacity for a potable water system. We hope to keep working forward to provide affordable water for our beneficiaries who call West Hawaii home. There are also a number of DHL-related measures that pass. These are the list of bills that we submitted testimony for that passed, and I'm available for any questions.
Chair, Commissioner Nevis?
Yes, on HB one one zero nine one, you said that it requires a county accept after receipt of, within sixty days after receipt of a completed application for maintenance request. Is that different than the application they have now? Because, you know, like you said, we have some that have been completed and not turned over, but it's the same application quest. So they have to accept it upon this application request.
Correct.
Okay, because, I mean, currently, we've sent in the request and they haven't taken it over, so that puts the bearing on us.
Correct.
Yeah, and then just a couple other items on the, on the, the other related items that you said were passed. HB seven thirty six relating to wastewater systems is, and also the cesspool conversion, I guess, my concern is for our beneficiaries. What's the status on those two? What is, can you explain that a little bit on seven thirty six wastewater systems and eight seventy nine on the cesspool conversions? Because what will happen is every once in a while, the county will come out with a program and everybody will jump on it, then it's gone. And most of our cesspool here in Kauai are on, on the west side, that's where we have most of them. And so that's, that's sort of a concern is, is what is the plan?
Those are great questions. HB seven three six, it appropriates seven hundred and forty five thousand three hundred and twenty five dollars to the UH Water Resource Center for a three-year pilot program to explore alternative technologies for wastewater systems. Now, what does that mean for DHL? Well, DHL worked on this bill with some of the other stakeholders and made it clear that we are open to them testing some of those technologies on Hawaiian homelands if needed. Because many of, much of Hawaiian homelands is situated in priority one areas according to the cesspool assessment tool. Now, HB eight seven nine relating to cesspool conversions, it appropriates seventy six thousand seven hundred and four dollars to the Department of Health to hire an engineer. Because again, we need that to complete the whole process for the state by twenty fifty.
That's okay. Yeah, that's all I have, chair, thank you.
Any other questions?
Chair.
Commissioner Kalakini?
Thank you, Chair, thank you, Ari. Just, I wanted to just ask about exhibit A, the charts for the sufficient funds. So for fiscal year twenty twenty six, our request totaled a little under ninety million. In the middle column that says GOV, is that like the governor's support for that amount? Is that what that represents? In the blue headings, there's FY twenty twenty six, DHL, and you have all the numbers below. And then the next column over is FY twenty twenty six, GOV, is that, what does that represent?
Chair, this is Lehuakini Laukano, if I can address Commissioner Kalakini's questions because Ari really took care of the bills, the legislative session. Like to the deputy, she took care a lot of the budget and really appreciate her advocacy. So I actually worked on these charts. So you're correct, we did our sufficient sums ask. That's the DHL, the first column, just under ninety million, as you're saying. The governor put in his budget request. He actually put in originally sixteen million eight thirty two oh seven two. But what he did was he put in a governor's message during the legislative session asking for an appropriation of two million dollars because there are nineteen unfunded positions that the department has. And so I added that two million, even though it wasn't originally part of Hospital three hundred, the original bill he did. There was a governor's message that came down. And then what the legislature appropriated is that eighteen million thirty two, so slightly less than what the governor had at two million, but represents the funding for those nineteen unfunded positions. That was for fiscal year twenty six.
Yeah, and it looks like fiscal year twenty seven is pretty much close, right, follows twenty twenty six.
Pretty much the, the same, correct.
And then on.
That's operating, yeah.
Operating, administrative and operating. And I see the CIP. So in the beginning of the item C two, the reference is made to the ten million dollars. It doesn't show up in this chart, does it?
So the ten million is actually part of the operating, uh-oh, actually, yes, you are correct. I'm looking at the bill right now and it's actually under a different item than our operating funds. But there is a ten million dollar A fund item that the legislature has been appropriating, I believe. Don't quote me, but I think since twenty twenty two. And those funds are supposed to be dedicated to homestead communities to, to do grants and activities. That, that was what, when the current lieutenant governor was Chair of the Finance Committee.
Got it, okay, appreciate it, that's very helpful, thank you, Libra, thank you, Ari. Thank you, Chair.
Any other questions?
Oh, yeah, question. Under, under what area does the roads come under? Department Economic Development or Transit Oriented Development?
Are you speaking to HB ten ninety one, this word?
I'm speaking on, in regards to roads, that's within the Department Hawaiian Homelands. Improvement on the roads. Do they have that on here?
Hmm, no, none of the bills or resolutions spoke to our roads in particular. But generally, we manage our roads and have been in the process of transferring them to the counties.
So none of the measures spoke, the bills spoke to, this is Lehuak again, spoke to roads specifically Commissioner La Sua, but in the operating, I'm sorry, the CIP budget, so it's on the chart. It talks about repair and maintenance. Those funds could be used towards roads. I'm not saying it's only exclusively for that, that's where LDD has a repair and maintenance staff, but that twenty million that was appropriated in fiscal year twenty six is for repair and maintenance for existing infrastructure, which could include roads on Hawaiian homelands, if that's what you're asking about, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? We have a question from outside. Patrick, Hawaii Olaa?
Aloha, Mikeako. Only this dialogue that happened, I'm just, was trying to get a better understanding. And again, Mr. Chair, if Lehuak could just expound on, as she mentioned, the operating expenses from the state to the department for whatever it is to operate. Is any of that funding, even if it's CIP, but is any of that funding coming out of trust funds, i.e. our commercial leases, you know, our, any of those proceeds and income that's derived on, as the Prince Gohio Plaza at Walmart, is any of that funding used to operate the department or included in the funds to operate? If you can understand what I'm trying to get to, Lehuak, thank you.
Thank you, Uncle Pat, for your question. So, in the charts that were provided, those are general revenues. So, the eighteen million in fiscal year twenty-six and twenty-seven for operating funds, that's all general revenues. So, none is coming from the use of lands. What I will say, though, in full disclosure, if you look at House Bill three hundred for HL, there is a reference to three point seven four million in each fiscal year for trust funds. That has been in our budget for quite some time. If I am not mistaken, and this would be a little bit kind of going more into the Rodney area where he would be able to answer, we're without ASO right now. I think some of those funds go more towards using it for, for existing, like existing uses on the Hawaii. It doesn't go like for operations or staff of anything of that nature. I'm hoping I'm answering that correctly. We can always follow up separately if need be, but my understanding is those funds do not support operating. All of that is coming through what we call A funds or the general revenues from the state.
I appreciate that, Lehuak, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me the opportunity.
Any other questions? Not, thank you, Ari. Hey, next item, D one, HSD Status Reports.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Again, Juan Garcia, Homestead Services Division Administrator. D one includes Exhibit A, which is the homestead lease and application title totals and monthly activity report. And Exhibit B is the loan delinquency report. As you will notice, our lease count has been unchanged since last month at ten thousand eighty-seven. But again, that's going to increase with the recent lease awards, with the project leases. Our exhibit A, the number of lease applications increased by about twenty, which represent about ten additional applicants on the list. And then the loan delinquency, as you'll notice, the department statewide has been unchanged, slightly unchanged. It went from twenty-five point four to twenty-five point three. The numbers with regards to an increase in West Hawaii by a little over one percent is mitigated by the decrease in the Maui loan delinquency. So, we stayed flat basically from last month to this month. But I have, if you have any questions, I'm available for any questions you may have.
No, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Hey, item E six, for information only issuance of project leases, Puona Phase One.
Good afternoon, Chair. Commissioners, Michelle Hitsman, Housing Project Branch Manager, Land Development Division. Item E six, for information only, this is regarding the issuance of project leases for Puona Phase One selectees pending home construction. So, in July of two thousand and twenty-four, the Puona Phase One Homestead residential lot leases were placed on DGHL agenda and approved. This is to inform the Commission that the department is now issuing project leases to the Phase One selectees while they await the construction for their homes. So, issuing project leases at this stage provides the awardees the opportunity to designate a twenty-five percent Hawaiian successor. This action is being taken to help protect the legacy of the selectees, many of whom may not have family members who meet the twenty-five, or excuse me, who meet the fifty percent Native Hawaiian requirement that applies to the applicants. Without the project lease in place, should an awardee pass away while still considering an applicant, their award would be at risk of being canceled due to the lack of a qualified successor. Thank you.
Okay, any, any questions, Commissioner? Permission, Neves?
So, so I guess my concern is that if, the last statement there, and I understand the statement, and, but what I'm saying is that if, if a person is, the, right now, if you're on application waitlist and you pass, you can leave it to fifty percent. This, this changes that to twenty-five percent. I think that's basically a violation of Hawaiian Homes Commission Act, because now you have a twenty-five percenter that's on the waitlist, which is not allowed.
So, we would be actually issuing them a project, a lease in that. So, it's.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying. They issued a lot already.
So, no, they haven't been issued a lot yet. They selected a lot, but while they're waiting for construction.
Well, that's what I'm saying. They've selected a lot.
Correct. They have selected a lot.
As long as they have a lot selection, I can understand it. If they don't have a lot selection, then we're in jeopardy.
Of them being.
Hawaiian Onyx Commission Act, because now you have a twenty-five percenter on the waitlist.
So, they'll, they actually will have a lease, just like the other projects where we're issuing project leases, they will actually have the fifty percent and will be issued out actual lease.
And I understand.
And then they will.
I understand, Michelle.
So, I'm not sure I'm understanding the question.
My understanding is that for us to do a twenty-five percent successorship, they asked to have a lot. So, if you've issued them a lot, then they could transfer it to a twenty-five percent successor. If we don't issue them a lot, they only have a paper lease, which is not a lot. Okay? And, you know, somebody may differ, but all I'm saying is that that person is considered still on the waitlist because they don't have a lot. If you assign them a lot, then they can transfer the lot.
No, they, they got a paper lease, excuse me, a project lease without a specified lot. The property description is sort of like undivided, this big project lot or parcel that's being developed. They got an interest in that. They gotta go and get categorized and figure out which, you know, whether they're going to be a Lytec or a owner builder or a Habitat or a Turnkey. Once you go through the process, which in the original award, it is a project lease. That is a lease. It's a homestead lease, which they can transfer or, you know, just designate a successor that's only twenty-five percent. But it is a, a lease. It's not a, it's not a, they don't, they, they're taken off the waitlist.
Well, I won't be voting in favor. Sorry. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Okay, any other questions or comments? Anything else, Ken?
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, next item, E seven. Land Development for Division Project Updates for the Island of Kauai.
Aloha, Chair Watson and Commissioners. My name, for the record, my name is Kalani Franda, Acting Administrator with the Land Development Division. Along with me presenting is Project Manager Robert Ng for the Island of Kauai, Homestead Land Development Specialist for Keha Cortero, and beside me, Housing Projects Branch Manager, Michelle Hitsman. Before we start, just wanted to extend our sincere mahalo to each division for their outstanding work from managing complex projects and lease awards, or this division, to meeting tight timelines and addressing beneficiary needs. Also want to say a big mahalo to each of the other divisions that have been really assisting us on the applications, the planning from the enforcement unit as well as HSD when on post awards. So, thank you very much for the huge collaboration that's been happening. So, we'll start off with the next slide, please. So, we're going to go through some of the water improvements that, and Robert Ng will, I believe he is on, is Robert Ng, and he'll be sharing with us water improvements. And right after that, Keha Cortero will share with us about repair, maintenance and operations projects on the Island of Kauai. And then Michelle and myself will share with you some of the things to be expected in regards to our development projects on this island. Robert?
Hi, good afternoon, Chair Watson and Commissioners, Robert Ng, Project Manager, Land Development Division. Can I have the next slide, please? Okay, so this is basically the decommissioning of four reservoirs. It was completed back in June of two thousand and twenty-four. We did receive the ASBILTS signed by DLNR. So, this project is complete. So, just to comfort all of you who are concerned about, you know, safety issues and liability, this project is, is, is pow. Thank you. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is USDA grants and loans specific to the Anahola Farm Lot Water System. This project is also complete, and this kind of shows the monies that we were granted through grants and loans. So, in all, DHHL expended roughly eleven million dollars, of which three point seven seven mil was DHHL contribution. We did claim all of the USDA grant for two thousand and sixteen, as well as the two thousand and eighteen USDA loan of four point one million dollars. So, in all, we have received a total reimbursement from federal government of seven point five million dollars. But for all intents and purposes, this project is, is complete. We have a couple of proposed improvements, you know, just to spruce up the two drainage outlets. That's, that goes down to a Lesi's Lot down below. We have funds for that from ledge appropriations that we're waiting to be released. And that would be about two, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, we're just waiting for the release of those funds. But other than that, this project is, is, is pretty much done. Next slide, please. Okay. Yeah, so this is just a overview of that Anahola Farm Lot Water System. That red dot symbolizes the four hundred and forty thousand gallon potable water tank. Can you go forward? Two clicks. Okay, so this is the Anahola Kuliana project that we are actively working on. Right now, we're having this project eligible for Nahazda and USDA funds, of which SHPT required Chapter one oh six and six E surveys to be done. Our last meeting this past week, it was determined that due to budgetary constraints, we were only able to pursue the development of the hundred and fifteen subsistence ag lots that average about two acres. And it's shown here on this image as the lots highlighted in yellow. That portion alone will pretty much take up the entire budget that we have. We are setting it up so that we can, you know, should the monies come in, we can pursue development of the pastoral lots, which are colored in brown above. But right now, we are hopeful that we're going to be able to go out to bid this October. And of course, you know, we'll add some additive alternates in case bids come in lower than expected, and that we have extra funds to develop roads. As you can see on the map, there's like three roads that go upward. We can hopefully develop those, but if not, we're going to just restrict the development, at least for the first phase, to the subsistence ag lots. Next slide, please.
Keha?
I think I'm missing the Anapepe two slide.
I'll cover that in our development projects.
Okay. Thank you all.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Chair. Keha Cortero, Public Works or Repairs and Maintenance and Operations Branch. Next slide, please. Act one thirty-two requires the upgrade conversion or sewer connection of all cesspools by two thousand and fifty. To support compliance, DHHL has contracted with Hawaii Engineering Group to carry out the assessment. Hawaii Engineering Group developed an accurate inventory of existing cesspools on DHHL lands. They've also prepared baseline engineering drawings and assessed site conditions for potential cesspool conversions in accordance with Act one twenty-five. Existing infrastructure was reviewed and recommendations for possible conversions provided in their final report submitted December two thousand and twenty-four. Next slide, please. The cesspool conversion working group recommends that priority one cesspools be converted by two thousand and thirty. House Bill one eighty-one aimed to accelerate the statewide cesspool conversion deadline. However, it did not pass. For Kauai, priority one areas would be Kekaha subdivision. Priority one areas include cesspools that are failing or at increased risk due to age, flooding or sea level rise. Although House Bill one eighty-one did not pass, DHHL supports accelerating conversions in priority one areas to prevent contractor bottlenecks, manage costs over time and prepare for future regulatory changes. Next slide. Based on the final report completed by Hawaii Engineering Group, two hundred and fifty-nine active cesspools were identified on Kauai. An additional ninety lots could not be accessed, accessed and are presumed to contain cesspools. The goal of this mapping effort is to build an accurate visual inventory of cesspools on DHHL lands. This inventory will guide future infrastructure planning and ensure compliance with the state cesspool conversion mandate. Next slide. The Kekaha subdivision has been identified as a priority one area, as I said previously, for cesspool conversion. According to the final cesspool assessment report dated December two thousand and twenty-four, there are forty-four verified cesspools in Kekaha that require conversion. An additional seventeen lots were inaccessible during the assessment, and so they were presumed to contain cesspools. This information will support planning and prioritization of conversion efforts in Kekaha. Next slide. The Anahola cesspool mapping, according to the final report from Hawaii Engineering Group, the Anahola Residence Lots contains a hundred and seventy-one confirmed cesspools. An additional fifty-nine residential lots were inaccessible and are presumed to contain cesspools. In the Anahola Agriculture Lots, forty-four cesspools were identified with fourteen additional agricultural lots that were inaccessible but presumed to contain cesspools. That's all for me. Thank you.
And I just want to mention, I know something that Commissioner La Sua had brought up. This unit has been working with, with our planning office on being able to address the cesspool conversions. But one of the big things that they have been working on is taking a look at our roadways, water systems, streetlights, et cetera, bringing it up to code so we can move these assets over into the management by the various municipalities. So, the counties will be, well, because they have the skill set and the manpower to be able to really manage these, these facilities. So, with that, we're going to move on to the next slide, new development projects. And Michelle's going to take us through the remainder of the year on some of the award schedule that we're working on. And Michelle's gonna take us through the remainder of the year on some of the award schedule that we're working on.
Thank you. So this is our remaining twenty twenty-five awards schedule. We're looking at approximately fifteen hundred, issuing fifteen hundred awards for the remaining of the year. Our, our dates are fluid, so there may have been some scheduled dates that were on last month's schedule that have changed, but the projects have pretty much stayed the same. I just wanted to highlight the projects that we're doing here on Kauai. The first one coming up is July nineteenth. We will be doing, reoffering the fourteen lots in P'elani Maikai in Phase One and Phase Two. With that, we will be partnering with Hawaii Community Lending to get those lots out to our applicants. And can, can you go back one slide, please? And then also in October, so October eighteenth, we'll be conducting the Waipouli Rent With Option to Purchase Workshop, partnering with Mark Development. And then in October, on October twenty-fifth, we'll be doing the Hanapepe Rent With Option to Purchase Workshop, again partnering with Mark Development. And then in November fifteenth, we'll be doing the first Waipouli selection. Thank you. Next slide. And this is just a map showing the lots in Phase One and Phase Two of P'elani Maikai. So again, there's two lots still remaining in Phase One and twelve lots remaining in Phase Two that we will be offering to our applicants and our undivided interest lessees. Thank you.
Well, the next slide is the Hanapepe Residential Phase Two. And as you had seen on the schedule of awards, we have a workshop that is coming up in regards to the thirty light tech units that are going to be developed by Mark Development. They were fortunate enough to submit a proposal and was awarded that opportunity to provide light tech funding, and so they will provide a workshop. We had a very successful workshop this past weekend on sharing what does it mean to participate in a rent with option to purchase. And we had really good Q and A and discussion with not only those that reside in Laopua village for Akal, but also those that are interested in participating in this next thirty-two that's gonna be coming up this summer. Next slide, please. And then last is Li Huay, it's the Grove Farm Eisenberg parcel, and so I just want to know just for correction purposes, we will be issuing out project leases, going through right now the fit analyses on it. But we're gonna be issuing out one hundred single-family, well, homestead for residential, one thousand for residential waitlists, and then another hundred for subsistence agricultural. So we'll be able to address the two waitlists, residential as well as agriculture in regards to Li Huay. There's a lot that's happening, and I just want to once again thank you, thank the staff for really working hard on moving the needle. I know that there was a question from Commissioner Neves on when can we expect next year's schedule? So we're hoping that we can result and be able to put that together by August for the, for the entire year of twenty twenty-six. Mahalo Chair, mahalo Commissioners, thank you very much.
Okay, Chair, can I go?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, just a couple of questions on the, on the Kuliana. Is, what, what's the cost for the pastoral lots that, that we're talking about that's deferred? You know what the cost will be?
Robert, are you still on?
I'm sorry, I don't have those figures in front of me. But at far, you know, if you include the pastoral lots, it, well, you, you just wanted an isolated.
Yeah, just isolated. No, how much money are you gonna need to get those activated? I know now you're saying I don't have the funds for it. We're gonna do the ag lots, which is fine. Just want to know how much money we're gonna need to do the pastoral lots.
Uh, I'm gonna probably take a minute to try and find that.
If you can just get that number to us, you know, hopefully by our next session.
Yes.
Just sort of get an idea for planning, so I can give that to our new commissioner. It's coming in.
Sure thing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
The other thing is, is on the schedule of the, the schedule for, for the light tech, can we move that schedule up? I have a lot of people who are trying to figure out, you know, whether they're gonna go light tech, do they understand light tech, they don't understand it. You know, from the get-go, when we started, we, we asked to get them out to give us a briefing. If, the earlier we could do that, the better we could get committed, folks. And then to, to put it on them in October and then say, okay, select not in November, it's like, wait, I gotta talk to my family. You know, how many people could I put in the house? All, all those things they need to know.
Cause I think those, the selection is coming up next year for Hanapepe.
Next year?
Yes, so it'll give them some pretty substantial time to get prepared on being able to prepare themselves as a family and then also go through the financial assessments.
Right, okay, let me, maybe I, maybe I misread your, your chart here. So it says, the workshop is in, in twenty-five, October fifteenth, and it says, oh, we don't, we don't have a selection then for Hanapepe.
Uh, it'll be next year.
Okay, okay, that's, that, maybe I'm missing that, yeah.
So we really wanted.
Okay, so we do have time. Okay, very good, very good. Let's see, what else? Oh, when you talked about on June seventh, it said something about P'elani Maikai scattered lots. Is that the number three?
Do you wanna share that?
So that is actually the Phase One and Phase Two. But instead of doing the orientation and the selection, we're combining the two because we already offered Phase Two in, I believe, April of twenty twenty-two. The fifty-one, these are lots that came back.
Yeah.
Based on cancellation, right? So we, we already have a backup list.
Yeah.
So the intent is we're not doing the orientation on June seventh. We will reach out to the applicants to make the offer, and then we'll do it all on July nineteenth.
Okay.
Yep.
And that workshop's gonna include our partnership with Kauai Community Lending, as well as some of the general contractors and being able to bring those resources to the table. So these that are in the backup list that have been waiting for a while have the resources that they can be able to tap on and utilize.
Yeah, and, and yeah, that's important, but I know initially you and I had some conversation that you were gonna bring in a contractor to do, to pre-build all the houses, but that's not what we're doing. It's gonna bring them in so that, hey, these people can talk to you. I, I know people that were, they were pre-prove ready to go, still took them three years to build their house. And that was because of our, our, you know, the getting permits and so on and so forth, but yeah.
We found that collaboration with HCL, they've been navigating the permit process as well. And so it's been very, you know, this, we're finding different options and different ways to really move the needle.
Yeah, yeah. The, so when we talk about, I just want to make sure our terminology is right. When we talk about, well, maybe it's not on there, this, this isn't part of your presentation, but think it covers everything. I want to make sure everything's covered so I can pass it on to my processor. So how to pay for your awards are gonna be sometime next year.
Yes.
Do we know when about?
We are in, I believe it was like February.
January, February.
January, February. So October, we'll do the, the light tech presentation that should give them time to figure out what they want to do.
And also follow up from the developer on, because they need to go through a process with those that are interested.
Correct. So those that are interested, they'll work with the developer to do the AMI and find out your background and so forth.
And I haven't been down to the project. How's the project going? I haven't been there in a while, you know.
Uh, Robert?
Data's there.
Robert's still on. The site work is moving along, and that was.
Yes, I'm still here.
Uh, Robert, if you could just give an update on Hanapepe's progress.
Okay. And you pull up that image on the PowerPoint, that might help. Okay, while we're waiting for that, they're finishing up on the storm drainage basin. They're erecting. If you look at that image, it's on the top left area. They're putting chain link fencing around that. They've graded for the roads. They're also installing sewer lines, water lines. I think they're mostly complete with that. And then they've started for the telecom and the fiber optic conduits along, along the road. And so Hawaiian Tel will be providing telephone service in place of SIC. And Spectrum is providing internet. And they've both agreed to accept original construction plans for these conduits. Even though it doesn't really conform with their normal standards, they've declared it to be adequate. So the good news is that we don't have to, you know, spend more money on different hardware. Uh, so that's kind of where it's at. They've graded the first third of the lot, starting from the left, which will be where the low income, the rent with option to purchase homes will be constructed. And we're hoping to start going vertical by this October, if not sooner.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And also I have the cost estimate for the Anahola Kuliana, if you don't mind backtracking.
Sure, go ahead.
So that is, the estimate was two point three million for the roads. And I was just kind of and I think the gravel roads, the three, the three veins that were shown on the image that were going Malka. That's another one point five million.
Commissioner Neves, we'll, we'll also put together a more detailed package for you to pass on as well in regards to these particular projects here.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mahalo Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Oh, wait, hang on, we do have one public test fire.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Uh, I was just wondering, I was surprised to learn just now that those awards in P'elani Maikai will be re-offered. What will those be re-offered to the same group that was at the top of the waitlist and had received the offers initially? Or to a whole new group of people?
So that offer, because we are re-offering that same lots from the initial fifty-two that we did in twenty twenty-two, we do have a backup list. So we'll actually go to that backup list of those applicants that stated they were interested, but did not have the opportunity to select. So that would be for Phase Two, the twelve lots in Phase Two. For Phase One, the two remaining lots, because we don't have a backup list, those will be offered to the undivided interest lessees. They will have the priority, priority for those two lists, for those two lots, excuse me.
Meaning the people at the top of the waitlist?
Well, we have undivided interest lessees there, so we have individuals that hold leases for P'elani Maikai. So those are the individuals that will be offered first for Phase One.
Oh. And my other question is, recently, I go on Moko Keavi, that the vacant lot awards recently given there, people were allowed to sign for their leases and receive their land awards without having to qualify for a construction loan and show proof of all of that, all of the things that we, that many of us failed and were rescinded from the offer of P'elani Maikai. And I was wondering why is it that Kauai was held to a different standard and couldn't just receive the vacant lots? And, and, and slowly over time, over the next few years, build incrementally with our own funds instead of qualifying for a construction loan. Why, how come?
So those were project leases specifically for the twenty-five lots in Kauai High. They were not provided an opportunity to select a lot yet. They will have that opportunity next year, or I believe sometime next year. However, it was really to be able to address the waitlist and be able to provide them a paper lease.
Okay.
Okay, but on Kauai, we weren't, people were not offered that opportunity and that option. We were just kicked back off and put at the waitlist again.
So on this with the project lease, it allows for our service providers to work with them to be able to find out their financial assessment on what they can afford and then be able to pursue working with the developer. It's not necessarily a vacant, you know, they have a choice to work with developer that is there that can construct a turnkey, or they also have the option to be able to build their own. However, they will have to come forth and, and put together a financial package as well.
Okay, so is it possible to try to get back on the, on the offerings for if, if we were went, we received a lot or a, a offer and were unable to, to meet the finance requirements, but you're saying we would, those people that failed in that way will not be re-offered the chance this time to try to get the, the P'elani Maikai second division, I forget what you guys call it.
The Phase Two. So because that's a, so we, I guess we consider it like a continuation of the offer because we made the initial offer in April of twenty twenty-two. We did the fifty-one lots and twelve of those lots came back to the department, if you will, the selectees. For whatever reason, we're unable to fulfill the requirements. And we do have a backup list still sitting there of those that reply that they're interested in those particular lots. So again, because it's not a new offer, we go to the backup list. It is still active until such time that all the lots, all the fifty-one lots in P'elani Maikai Phase Two are awarded.
Okay, I understand that. And do you think, and just, this is just a philosophical question. I mean, I'm wondering, since obviously so many people couldn't meet those requirements for funding for a construction loan, perhaps it would be good for DHHL to be more reasonable and flexible is in terms of if people want to do their own construction, allow them to do it in a, just like the rest of the world might need to do in these times, which would be like a six-year phasing instead of you have to have everything funded and done in one year kind of thing.
I think with our, thank you. So I think with our partnership with Hawaii Community Lending, then they will assist the selectees, work them through if they need credit assistance, financial counseling, HCL will assist with that as well as walk you through the house plans. So for those who have, have taken like three to four years to obtain financing and to build their homes, they'll partner up with HCL and get some assistance that way.
But that won't be helping the people who just failed this last round on P'elani Maikai. It's only gonna help the people who are now getting offered those lots, correct?
Correct, correct. That's for PMKK. So that would be for future offers as well. We'll work with other partners to help to assist the applicants and the lessees to work through that vacant lot process.
Okay, and just to confirm, out of all those Phase Two lots, nobody, nobody that was offered and tried to accept an award on this last round, nobody got them. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, nobody got a lease?
Yeah, on the P'elani Maikai Phase Two lots, there, you're basically, they're all being re-offered, correct?
Twelve of the fifty-one is being re-offered.
Oh, twelve of the fifty-one, my mistake.
We have lessees and homes that have been built in Phase Two.
Oh, mahalo, okay. Mahalo Nui, thank you. That's, those are all my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mahalo.
Uh, Chair, I just have one more question.
Sure.
The Grove Farm Eisenberg parcel, we've never had a really a beneficiary consultation to look at the plan. Are we gonna do that before we start issuing releases? I mean, nobody's, all we've seen is, is a picture. Nobody's seen the layout, what it looks like, can, can, I mean, we'd like to know what it looks like. I mean.
Yeah, I'd like to know what it looks like too.
But you're already giving out leases. But I'm saying, you said you were gonna be giving out leases. I'd like to look, we really need to talk.
Yeah, we'll have an orientation prior to that. And then we'll, you know, whoever wants is interested, they come to the orientation and, I mean, after it, then we at the orientation, we'll lay it out with all, you know, the sites and size of the lots and number of units and where they're located. We'll go through the process that we're doing on all the big ones, similarly.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item, G three, for information only, status update on plan implementation on the island. Okay, next item, G3, for information only, status update on plan implementation on the island of Kauai. Andrew Choy.
Aloha Commissioners, item G3, for information only, a status update on plan implementation on the island of Kauai. With me today are Kiolo Masman, who is the Kauai Island Planner. This is his first time in front of the Commission as staff. So I just wanted to introduce him. He's been with the department since October 2024. He comes to us from Group Seventy and has a wealth of knowledge and experience. So I will pass it over to him.
Okay, we gotta grill him, guys.
Be nice to me, please. Aloha Maiko and our Commissioners Chair, my name is Kiolo Masman, the current planning liaison for the island of Kauai. I am presenting today on G3, status update on our plan implementation on Kauai. So just a quick refresher on how our planning system works. Our general plan provides us with the definitions of our land use designations and defines our programmatic goals. Our island plans provide us comprehensive resource planning and land management goals, identifies the land use designations for each island and identifies priority areas for future projects. Lastly, our regional plans identify priority projects and possible projects in each region. Each of these plans require beneficiary consultation. Next slide. So the Kauai Island Plan identifies seven planning areas on the island of Kauai. Waimea, Kekeha, Hanapepe, Waialua, Kapaha, Anahola, Kamalo, Malo'o, and Molowahaa. Next slide, please. Our Kauai Island Plan was approved by the Hoine Homes Commission in 2004. As stated in the last couple or couple slides ago, the Island Plan provides us comprehensive resource for planning and land management, identifies island-wide needs and assigns land use designations for our land holdings. Next slide, please. So these next couple of slides are just our land use designations that are in our Kauai Island Plan. If you would like more information, please see our Kauai Island Plan, which you can find online. These have been in existence from 2004. And there may have been some changes to our land use designations since then. So the priority projects identified in our Kauai Island Plan are in these areas in Hanapepe, Anahola, and Waialua. As you can see, these are all our goals for those areas, four hundred eighty-two residential homesteads in Hanapepe with fifteen acres for parks, school, and other amenities. As Kalani and LDD had kind of presented already, there are four phases to this project. Eighty-two lots coming in phase two. More potable water and other infrastructure is needed for phase three for Anahola. We had over eleven hundred homestead lots as the goal for that area with fifty acres for community use and commercial. Five hundred seventy-seven homestead lots have been leased out so far with five hundred thirty-one residential leases and forty-six ag. And Waialua Homestead's goal in our Island Plan was sixty, six hundred and fifty-one homestead lots with fifteen acres for community use. Since the approval of the Kauai Island Plan in 2004, we've had four land use amendments since then. In Hanapepe, when we created our master plan, Pu'opai's Kulianna Homestead Plan, Anahola's Kulianna Homestead Plan, as well as the Ulupono Anahola Project. The Anahola Kulianna Homestead Lots, they has, was approved in 2021 with a hundred and fifteen homestead lots in that plan, fourteen for pastoral and a hundred and one for subsistence ag on four hundred and thirty-two acres. And a comprehensive update to the Kauai Island Plan is due to start in the next few years, which will include all of these amendments as well as any new land acquisitions that we have on Kauai. So going into our regional plans now, we have three regional plans for the island of Kauai. Our Anahola Regional Plan, which was originally created in 2010 and updated in 2022. Our Waialua Regional Plan, which was created in 2009. And our West Kauai Regional Plan, which was approved in 2011. Our West Kauai Regional Plan also includes our planning areas of Hanapepe, Kapaha, and Waimea. Areas that haven't been captured yet in our regional plans are Kekeha and Molowahaa. So again, the Anahola Regional Plan was updated in 2022, brought to the Commission in November and final approval was given in December 2022. Many homestead associations and beneficiary organizations have began championing our priority projects that were identified in that regional project, regional plan. Next slide, please. Our West Kauai Regional Plan is the next to be updated. It will begin in fourth quarter of fiscal year 2025, or the first quarter of fiscal year 2026. All homestead associations and beneficiaries in the area are invited to come to the two to three session regional plan update. And yeah, invites will be sent out as soon as procurement is completed. So the next few slides are our regional plan priorities. And while I will not go through all of them, otherwise we'll be here all day. I will point out some of the changes that have happened since our last Kauai update, beginning with that first top line, the West Kauai developing agricultural and water plan for Pu'opai. Of course, Kickoff Hoine Homestead Association was issued a twenty-year license for two hundred thirty-one acres of land up at Pu'opai to implement their phase one of their farm and irrigation plan. However, the West Kauai Energy Project, which was going to provide infrastructure improvements to that area is now no longer occurring. So DHHL, along with the other stakeholders in the area, ADC, Kekeha Ag Association, DLNR, are working with the Commission of Water Resource Management to plan, find alternatives to provide water to that area. Another update is to the multipurpose evacuation and education center. We have, we're just in the infancy, working with HCDC to look at areas for the evacuation center. Next slide, please. For Waialua, these are the priority projects identified in the regional plan. All of these projects will be included in the Waialua Master Plan that is currently being done. Next slide. And lastly, our Anahola Regional Plan, these are the priority projects identified. Each one of these, with the exception of the Surface Water Resource Management, are being championed by our beneficiaries and by our Hoine Homestead Associations. Our Surface Water Resource Management, we've begun having internal conversations amongst the department, looking at opportunities of obtaining more surface water for our homesteads in Anahola. Our Kauai Master Plans and Environmental Assessments, so there, the reason why we have our master plans and our environmental assessments, any type of development that happens on our lands requires three forty-three process, which means most likely, we will be required to do an environmental assessment. And our master plans allow us to identify our impacts. Not only do they allow us to do that, but they also allow us to guide our construction process as well when it comes to infrastructure and allotments. So if we look at all of our master plans that we've done so far for the island of Kauai, we can see that the total number of lots that will be coming up is about one thousand ninety-seven with the new Hanapepe constructions, the projects going on in P'ilani Maikai and Anahola Maoka. Of course, Pu'opai is still a question mark due to the removal of the West Kauai Energy Project. Next slide, please. This is just a breakdown of our lots based on land use. Next slide, please. So our first master plan that we completed in 2020, the first amendment that we had from our Kauai Island Plan was the Hanapepe Master Plan approved in Hoit, in October 2020. Kauai Island Plan needs to be amended again to reflect these changes. And as we've stated before, phase two, eighty-two lots coming online soon. At full buildout, this is the breakdown of lots and uses per land use designations. Our Anahola Kulianna Homestead settlement plan, as Robert had said, we have met about the construction of this area. Our map here is a little bit different than the one he used. The plan was approved in May 2021. Abysia clearing and road improvements were completed and soon we will start with our sub-ag developments. Below is our breakdown of usage per the land use designations. And last but not least is our Pu'opai Kulianna Homestead Lots. The Fonzie was completed in August 2020. Majority of this land was going to be used for, or a good portion of this was going to be used for ag lots. Kulianna subsistence ag lots, to be specific, with eleven pastoral lots, sixty-three supplemental ag, and three hundred and two acres for community use, which would have included the use for the West Kauai Energy Project as well. But this master plan is on hold until we can find the necessary infrastructure improvements. Our Waialua Homestead Master Plan and Environmental Assessment, the process for this has already begun. We are going out to beneficiary consultation on June fourteenth, and the final steps to this project should end in June 2026. I present this picture just to show that we are looking at this plan holistically. We understand that there is a the Eisenberg property and we're looking forward to that becoming reality, but we also have things to look at such as our historical corridor in Waialua and the possible relocation of the wastewater treatment plant. All of these things coming online for the Waialua Master Plan. So, big picture, this is kind of what's coming online now with the P'ilani Maikai plan showing a hundred and seventy-one lots, or P'ilani Maikai, as well as the Anahola Kulianna Plan providing over two hundred lots. Our Waimea area providing about two hundred and fifty lots, Hanapepe with around six or five hundred fifty, and the Waialua Master Plan still pending on what type and how many lots will be allotted. So next steps, we are beginning to update our West Kauai Regional Plan. This is an opportunity for you and your neighbors to identify needs and opportunities, identify potential projects to improve your homestead. Vote to identify the five priority projects for the region, whether they'll stay the same from the last regional plan or have new priority projects, opportunities for creative solutions to address homestead needs, things that we haven't even thought about yet, as well as opportunities to innovate programs to get further connected to our Ainaho Pula Pula. We also are looking at the Kauai Island Plan update within the next couple of years. This is a twenty-year planning horizon. All of Kauai beneficiaries will be invited, will assign land use designations for all the DHHL lands on the island and establish land use goals and objectives that further implement the general plan and identify island-wide needs, opportunities, and priorities.
Questions? Thank you for that presentation. Good job.
Chair, I just had a couple of questions.
Commissioner Nevis?
On the you, you didn't mention anything on Molowahaa, the Molowahaa area. Do you have any plans for that? We just picked up that that right-of-entry, three hundred and fifteen acres, Molowahaa, we have a possibility for taking over a well that was turned back in. Do you have any information on that?
Thank you for raising that. I think that's one of the things that as we look ahead to fiscal year twenty-six that we've made request budget to start the planning process for Molowahaa.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, any other questions? Lordess Torres, Public Testimony.
Hello, can you hear me and see me?
Yes, I don't know what's, yeah, we can see you too.
Okay, thank you for allowing me and my testimony. Good afternoon, gentlemen and ladies. I am here as a concerned resident of the Waipoli Courtyards, our Waipoli. I have been testifying several times throughout the last year and a half, maybe almost two years, just because I have some serious concerns about the funds that are being allocated. The two point four, I think it went up now to two point four. The specific question is, how do we get to that number and what units were used in Kauai? What housing was used in Kauai to get to that number? We had a expert, we have an expert who did some really excellent preliminary numbers and came up with six point plus. And those were conservative numbers. So I'm concerned about being moved someplace and then running out of money in six months or so. What will we do and where will we go? So I want to continue to sound that alarm because my life depends on it and my children's life depend on it. In terms of finding a place, we've been looking diligently to get something that's comparable and affordable and haven't been able to do so. So I'm here again, not only on behalf of myself, but on behalf of the almost sixty other families that are going to be facing tremendous hardship because of this move. So I want to be on the record to say that I am very concerned about the funds and the URL plan, how it's going to evolve, because we still don't have an actual list of places that we can go and how this is all going to go down. And it's gotten to the wire now. We're past, we're in May and we still don't have a lot of answers. And we'll make those known as well. Thank you for your time. Aloha.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, it's not, thank you. Hey, G4, for information only, the Kauai water issues and projects.
Aloha Commissioners, item G4, for information only, Planning Office will be giving a water projects and issues update for the island of Kauai. With me today, I have Sharika Anana, our Water Resource Specialist, who will be giving the update.
Aloha Chair and Commissioners, Shri Khan and our Water Program Specialist. I'll be providing an update on our Kauai water projects and issues. Next slide, please. So our water policy plan that was approved by the Commission in 2014's priority goal number one is to affirmatively communicate with our beneficiaries regarding water decisions, performance, and water rights on a regional.
But I told her that it was just a three-minute testimony and she was fine with it. She's super cool.
And that is why we are presenting this today. So a quick overview of our agenda, I'll be going over the written submittal and then focusing on two things that I want you to take away from today. First, our water needs in Kauai, and then an update on the Waimea mediation that Kiolo touched a bit upon in his presentation. Okay, so for our submittal, it is broken into six different parts. It focuses first on our water demands and reservations, the Waimea mediation updates, other projects with future water implications, the Commission on Water Resource Management. the Commission on Water Resource Management's low AS eight, changes in the state's permitting process for well construction and pump installation permits, and then finally related work with our beneficiaries and capacity building to secure water resources and address water issues. Next slide, please. So for today, as I mentioned, I'll just be going over the first two. Okay, so the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act of nineteen twenty-one was an amazing step towards rehabilitating Native Hawaiians and putting us back on the land. However, the lands that were given to us were often remote, arid, and dry. Therefore, a key step to fulfilling the act is securing water for our lands, both potable and non-potable, drinkable, and irrigation water. Next slide, please. However, securing water isn't simply a matter of just sticking a faucet in the ground and hoping water comes out. It's a very lengthy process. So before we can even take the steps to acquire water, we first need to determine our water needs. And by doing this, we take the island plans and regional plans that were developed with beneficiary consultations so that were adopted as formal plans for each island and the land uses within those plans. And then we apply standard water rates, which are often the water system standards of the county we're in. And through that, we can determine estimated water needs and demands for our various regions. So we have our demands on one side. On the next step, we have securing our water reservations. Water reservations are the amount that the Water Commission sets aside for DHHL's current and future uses that is supposed to prevent anyone else from using it. They can be set in a few different ways that the submittal and Exhibit A goes a bit more detail into. So once a reservation is secured, in order to turn this paper water into wet water, we also have to obtain capital improvement project funds, develop source, transmission, and storage, go through any environmental assessments, and then reach agreements with the county or water purveyors to operate that system for us or set up our own system and go through that whole process. So once we have completed all of those steps, we've succeeded in securing at least partially the water needed for a specific land tract. And sometimes, or more often than not, we actually have to go undergo iterations of this process to get the full amount of water needed for full build-out. And then, of course, after this, we still need to build out the lot and award it. So for the island of Kauai, right now, having applied that methodology to our lands, the largest figure for our lands is in and around Pu'upai, which is about sixteen hundred acres, which will need about twenty-six million gallons a day of non-potable water for irrigation. Thirty-four point seven million gallons a day is the ultimate amount of water that we'll need for full build-out of our lands on this island. But of course, as you can see, there are a few to be determined tracts that I'll touch a bit more upon later that are not included in this total amount. So the next step in the process is water reservations. And as we can see, these are the current reservations that we have on this table here, based on our potable water needs. They've given us almost all the water that we think we need in terms of reservations from these different hydrologic units. We also have a larger reservation of surface water from the Waimea Surface Water Hydrologic Unit, which was received as a part of the Waimea Watershed Agreement in 2017. And it's actually our largest reservation to date anywhere in Hawaii. And it was the first instance of a reservation of surface water for the Department of Hawaiian Homelands. So this is a really important thing for us in the long-term protection of the trust interests. Reservations are still needed for Mulua'a and Lihue'a. For Mulua'a, as Commissioner Nevis mentioned, there is a well on state land in the Forest Reserve that was previously operated by a revocable permit holder. This would be a good drinking water source for our lands in Mulua'a. This revocable permit holder, however, was previously pursuing a long-term lease of water, and that triggers the requirement HRS one seventy-one five eight G in the state law for DHHL to get a reservation from the Water Commission. Although it appears that that revocable permit holder does not want to continue holding that permit, a reservation is still needed for these lands. And then, of course, for Lihue'a, it's one of our newer land acquisitions. We'll need to have an estimated water demand calculated. And then beneficiary consultations are typically held before we can formally send a request to the Water Commission for reservation. Next slide, please. Thank you. So shown here is a map of our Waimea lands on the west side of Kauai. The green is the sixteen thousand or so acres owned by the trust, part of the original land set aside in the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act of nineteen twenty-one. The red lines represent the Ko'ke'a ditch irrigation system. And this is the system that currently provides water to our lands. And we're hoping maybe further improved to further assist with the implementation of our Pu'upai Settlement Plan. Next slide, please. So this is a timeline. I'm going to go through it so you don't have to try to speed read it right now. I'm about to just walk us through it. So in May of twenty seventeen, the historic Waimea Watershed Agreement was established to settle a number of water issues related to the Waimea River. The parties in this agreement included DHHL, Po'ai'va'ola, represented by Earth Justice, the State Agribusiness Development Corporation, otherwise known as ADC, their tenants, Ke'kaha Agriculture Association, otherwise known as KAA, and the Kauai Island Utility Cooperative, otherwise known as KIUC. So this agreement arose from the efforts made by the Water Commission to resolve issues related to the Po'ai'va'ola petition to amend the interim in-stream flow standard. This is the minimum amount of water that must be left in the stream at all times, in addition to a petition for a water reservation for our Waimea lands. So in June of twenty seventeen, our reservation of surface water that I previously mentioned of about six point nine million gallons a day was granted for our lands in and around Pu'upai. A major component of this agreement was the potential development of a pump storage and flow-through hydropower by KIUC. In pursuit of this project, KIUC submitted what is called an environmental assessment or an EA and a finding of no significant impact or a Fonzie on the surrounding area. However, this final EA and Fonzie were challenged on January eighth of twenty twenty-three. So on December thirteenth of twenty twenty-three, KIUC released a statement that they would be discontinuing active development of the energy project due to delays caused by litigation, project uncertainty, and increased costs. So thus resulting in the timing of DHHL's Pu'upai Settlement Plan now facing uncertainty as this West Kauai Energy Project would have rehabilitated Pu'u'ua and Pu'upai's reservoirs and provided critical infrastructure that was needed. However, despite discontinuation of this project, the twenty seventeen Waimea Watershed Agreement requires KIUC to implement Phase One modifications for the four tributaries of the Waimea River. On January thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, KIUC tried to implement its plans by going forward before the Water Commission for necessary permits. And concerns were raised by ADC and KAA that if this Phase One went in, initially planned to be the first of many phases, DHHL's existing beneficiaries would not get water for significant amounts of time over the year. So we raised our concerns with the Water Commissions, who deferred this request from KIUC. So it took numerous months of back and forth with the Waimea watershed agreement parties to ensure that water gets to first and foremost DHHL's beneficiaries and ADC's tenants on the system. So during these discussions, KAA proposed alternative Phase One modifications and a transfer of this responsibility from KIUC to ADC and KAA. So part of this conversation ended up including what the appropriate amount they should be compensated, which they agreed upon in the amount of seven hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. So last year, we brought this to the Commission on October twenty-first to authorize the Chair to sign the stipulation agreement, releasing KIUC from its obligations under the twenty seventeen Waimea Watershed Agreement, which was approved. So on October twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-four, the stipulation agreement and the transfer agreement between KIUC and KAA and ADC were executed. This can be found in Exhibit B. And since then, KAA has began the process of constructing alternate Phase One modifications. They just got the gates in last week to formally officially begin. Additionally, the remaining parties of the Waimea Watershed Agreement, including the Department of Land and Natural Resources and Water Commission staff, have been meeting regularly to discuss interim operations and communications protocols for low flows while these modifications are completed. Next slide, please. So since October of twenty twenty-four, Waimea has been facing really long, dry periods with sporadic periods of short, heavy rainfall. So in order to mitigate water distribution during these low-flow periods, we've been assisting with communications between KAA and our lessees. And we recently, actually last week, did a site visit to the delivery portion of the Ko'ke'a ditch system as it seems most appropriate for everyone involved in these discussions to be familiar with the system. So pictured here is the Pu'u'Moi Divide. This is the point in the system where it splits the water in the ditch between going towards the Kitano Reservoir and KAA's tenants and the Pu'u'upai Reservoir and our lessees. So on the right, you can see the Pu'u'upai Reservoir. Once abundant, it's now appearing as a very modest pond in the little corner there. Due to the open earth ditch system, much water is lost due to evaporation and seepage into the ground before it can return to this reservoir. So while completion of Phase One modifications may assist with water distribution, further funds will need to be allocated for improvements to the DHHL portion of the ditch and water storage for the future success of these lands and ultimately our beneficiaries. So I know that was a lot of information. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
Any question?
No, I don't have any. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, G six, for information only, a Fonzie for YNI Coast Comprehensive Health Center. And your joint.
Aloha Commissioners, item G five, for information only. We are presenting a draft environmental assessment and anticipated finding of no significant impact for the YNI Coast Comprehensive Health Center's Ela'pa'yo Food Campus Master Plan. With me today, I have members from the YNI Coast Comprehensive Health Center who will be walking us through the presentation.
Can you hear me? Can I be heard? Hello?
Yes, John, I can hear you. Hi. Shall I start? My name is Alicia Higa. I'm the Executive Director for Ela'pa'yo Social Services. But I also hold a dual role with the YNI Coast Comprehensive Health Center as the Chief Health Equity Officer. And today, we're just sharing a little bit of our story of how this proposal came to be. And it really started as a shout. It was really a request of our community. And so these first slides are just a depiction of how our community, especially within our Wainia Moku, has been, it used to be a food basket, which has now turned into a food desert because of the water diversion. So this is an image of Ka'ala Farm. And in that picture to the far right, you can see that there is this green space where Ka'ala has been able to bring the water down. But outside of that, you see how dry that is and how barren and how prone we are to fires. Next slide. Within our community, food insecurity has always been an issue. And the fragility of our food system was really shown during the pandemic when a study came out that indicated that forty-three percent of Native Hawaiians are food insecure. And I would argue that within our own community, that that is, our percentage is even higher. Currently, our food programs are seeing an exponential increase in the number of participants through our food pantries, which we really focus on our keke in the schools and our kupuna on our coasts. Next slide. And you can see that as a result of the accessibility issues that we have in receiving fresh local produce within our own community, that the health disparities match and the numbers of our community members receiving assistance also correlate with that as well. Next slide. And so this is our pathway, and this is the way that we've chosen to design programs for our coasts. And we focus on four pillars: food access, community wellness, and food as medicine and food sovereignty. Next slide. So for food access, we own and operate two food justice farmers markets on our coasts. We were the first to take SNAP at a farmer's market. And we started our own SNAP doubling program back in two thousand thirteen. And it serves as the template for what you see today as a statewide doubling program. We are the largest farmers market in the state for SNAP and SNAP doubling, and the only ones to double on local proteins. And we purposely do this so that our community has access to the fresh local produce that's grown in our community and access to the local proteins. That oftentimes, these products go outside of our community to end up on high-end hotel and restaurant plates for our tourists. We were the first to also take SNAP. And all of these programs were intentionally designed to put the money of these programs right into the pockets of our local community farmers and to provide access to the fresh foods that our community deserves. Next slide. Another component of our food access programs is our food pantries. And we actually started our keke pantries prior to the pandemic in response to a elementary school principal who had reached out. And what they were finding was that a lot of the kids who were showing up to school, a lot of them hadn't had breakfast that morning. It would show up at the cafeterias before the cafeteria had even opened. And for some, they didn't even have dinner the night before. And what they were finding was that a lot of these teachers in these public schools were having to out-of-pocket purchase food so that the kids would be able to focus and not end up in the health room. And so the school principal reached out to see if we would be willing to partner with them. Because at the time, a partnership between a DOE school directly with the Hawaii Food Bank was not allowed, and they needed a nonprofit intermediary. And so we gladly stepped in. And from four pantries, we've soon filled every single school. So today, we are in every DOE and public charter school on the coast, serving eleven schools, over five thousand kids weekly, providing healthy meals, shelf-stable food, healthy snacks, and providing fresh local produce, a lot of which is purchased from within our own community through educational farms and even some of our backyard growers. We also operate, oh, sorry, one more. We also operate five weekly kupuna pantry sites. And so currently, we're serving an duplicated eleven hundred kupunas every week, providing them also with fresh meals, local produce, pantry items, and frozen meats that we partner with the Hawaii Food Bank in. Next slide. In addition, we do community-wide food distributions. And so during the pandemic, of course, everyone was doing them across the state. But we were doing food distributions pre-pandemic, and we continue to do them post-pandemic. The difference with the style of food distributions that we do is that we're making sure that there are strict rails in place that only bring in healthy foods for our community because of the high, the poor health disparities that we're witnessing due to the types of food that is accessible for them. And so we work very closely with the school officials. We work with YNA High School culinary programs. And they actually help to prepare the healthy dinners that get served at these food distributions. They do cooking demonstrations to teach community how to use the shelf-stable items along with the local produce items we're purchasing. And then community members get to take all this home and with recipe cards so that they're able to be empowered to make these foods themselves. Next slide. You know, in addition to the eleven, over eleven million pounds of food that we've distributed just since the pandemic, it's not just about giving food out. It's also about the educational component in teaching our community of what to do with the food, how to grow it. Budget-wise, how to plan, you know, to incorporate these healthy foods into their finances. And so we do a lot of free workshops for the community. Although we are a health center, our workshops and all these food access programs are open to everyone in our community. So food preservation, financial literacy. We do a lot of work around emergency preparedness. And we do this because with the current plans that the state has for us is essentially, we all have to take care of ourselves and store up fourteen days of food and water supply. And we know that for our community, with the high food insecurity rates, that people are just worried about what they're going to eat the next day or for that week for their families. And with the multi-generational households that we have in our community, to be able to store that much food and water in their homes is just, it's not doable. And so we're working with community to come up with plans specific to food. And we've actually partnered with Hawaii Food Service Alliance to actually pilot the state's first recovery pod. And currently, we have two pods on our campus that is storing emergency food for deployment for our community. Next slide. So food as medicine is kind of a buzzword right now just because the state's Medicaid eleven fifteen waiver just recently just recently, uh, passed to include food as medicine in its recent waiver. Uh, but we've been doing food as medicine since two thousand seventeen, offering our patients produce prescriptions uh, and a program called a food subscription. And so essentially our providers are able to provide, um, prescribe fresh local fruits, vegetables, poi, local proteins to their patients based on their chronic diseases. Next slide. This is where I'm gonna turn it over to Jesse. I've described some of the things that we are connecting towards food sovereignty for our community. Um, and I, I'm really happy to introduce you to Jesse Nikosobe Kelly Inohomoku, who is our Indigenous Food Systems Manager and has been incredibly vital in the plans for our future.
Hello, Kako. Um, good evening, everybody. Um, Jesse Nikosobe Kelly Inohomoku. Um, fairly quickly with the time we have, I want to speak on behalf of what we're doing with the Alpula Pula Project and just some of the work that is grounded within our food system within here, within Y N I. Um, one of the biggest crops that we've been focusing on is kalo and new. And that being our culturally-preferenced foods and being able to create access, um, to this plant material within Y N I and give them systems, agroforestry systems to implement within their yard and, um, irrigation systems since we sit here in the dry side of the island. Other things that we address via food sovereignty is, is such a buzzword, but Y N I, we've, we've been ready. There's a lot of people planting fruit trees within their yard. And during mango seasoning, for example, a lot of them go to waste. So part of the goal is to, um, gain access to that, to give, have them see, um, you know, importance within their surplus, be able to purchase it, find ways to connect it to markets and, uh, just be able to, uh, make use of it and show them that we have our autonomy over our food and decisions there. Other ways that we address food sovereignty is through backyard gardening. And this is one of the exciting projects that came out of, um, COVID is diarrhea funding was able to open up doorways for us to implement, um, these systems, um, these gardens and people's backyards. That does speak, um, emphasis to growing our culturally-preferred foods. So being able to follow them from plant gif all the way to their backyards and, uh, help them implement that into their eating styles, their diet and so forth. Um, I just also wanted to speak on behalf of planting trees and how important that is. More than ever, um, in the case of a natural disaster, uh, we have food in the ground. Uh, for example, oodle trees in Fiji were able to feed their communities after a natural disaster. So be, so thinking of that in mind and places like Y N I only is fitting to be able to, um, grow those type of foods and have that ready for our community in the case of a natural disaster. Next slide. Thank you. Um, Y N I, we sit one of the most vulnerable areas, um, dry side. We receive around twenty inches of rain annually and sometimes we receive it in one day. Um, it is our, um, essential effort as a Ela Pau Social Services is to plant trees and be able to, um, record and collaborate with organizations within the community um, to respond to this, um, with fire breaks and so forth. Next slide. Um, as Alicia was mentioning kind of briefly earlier about our recovery pod, there is, uh, two recovery pods now, but the first one was formed between Alicia Higa and Chad Bock of Hawaii Food Service Alliance, where they came together and they're able to house over two hundred thousand meals in one individual recovery pod. The city and county then decided to replicate this process and now we have over five hundred thousand meals, um, capable of being rolled out during a natural disaster or even pre-disaster. Next slide. Uh, one of the critical roles of partnering with organizations within the community, we partner with an organization called Serene of K C C. And, uh, we gathered community members and they identified Y N I in twenty twenty-three as one of the resiliency hubs. And what that means for us is that we checked off most of the boxes of having emergency first aid, access to water, reliable communication, uh, community gardens and food and so forth. So taking that into account, Alicia, I mentioned to the team that it is our responsibility to respond to that and, um, seeing and emphasizing that this food campus will be one of those homes for our community to come to.
And we'll turn that over to you now, John. Thank you.
Thank you. Because everyone can see what an incredible project that we're dealing with. And I felt very fortunate to come up with a plan so that we can fit all of these different programs. And for those of, can you see me? I can't see if I, if you can see me or hear me.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Well, then, uh, I'm very grateful to be here, uh, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Uh, it's been some time that we have been working on this project. And, uh, I'm here to introduce and talk for the environmental assessment and showing you kind of the final product and showing you the program. You saw what the program is and what we're gonna be designing for. And now coming, having to come back for the Fonzie, this is an anticipated Fonzie, uh, to come back, I just wanted to summarize the environmental assessment. And now you know what the content is of everything we're doing, uh, to present to you, uh, what, what you see before you. And I just wanna give you the bullets on the summary of, of the environmental assessment. One, that the lots are owned, of course, by the Department of Hawaii Homelands. So you are a regulatory authority and everything we do will, will work with you. And I wanna give a big thank you to Andrew and Kahana and Linda Chin for helping us and going through this process. Their assistance has been really helpful. Uh, the site is generally unimproved, uh, land of varying slopes. And our comment on the slopes is we're gonna be working with the slopes and I try to flatten the whole place, but try to terrace it and work within the slopes that we have. Uh, there are no, um, rare or any threatened endangered species of any flora fauna present. Uh, these historical features were, there were three historical features discovered on the site uh, through archaeological study, uh, that we sponsored. And if and when we start that construction, we have a mechanism in which to follow up and take care of those sites. Um, the properties are not in a flood hazard area. Let's see, the properties are not within a sea level rise exposure area. Uh, there's, we're in the flood, no flood zone, uh, threat, it's in, in the X area. Uh, there's a need for irrigation water and there's no direct vehicle access to the site so that we're gonna have to create some ramps or some entrances into Mauiiui. So this is just some studies in the, on the entrance. And what I wanted to do here is just to show you the relationship where it is by Y N I Coast Comprehensive Health Services. And then right next to it is the area of this fifteen acres that we're looking at. And, and in summary, that's, that's pretty much it on, on how we're doing it. And if there's any questions, please stand for some questions.
Any questions, uh, Commissioners? Uh, with respect to the water, uh, irrigation, are you gonna integrate the sewer treatment plant adjacent?
Yes, there's, if you notice on the plan, but thank you for that question, uh, Mr. Chair. I've been working with, uh, uh, with the wa- wastewater treatment plant and being able to bring water over. So we're, we are, have investigated that there is a pond, um, planning on the site for, uh, filtration of the water and that we, we can use for watering. So yes, we're still looking at that and working that solution out.
You see, how about your funding? What, what kind of funding sources are you guys looking at?
Well.
I can speak on that, John. Uh, since to date, um, we've raised about four point six million dollars towards this project. Um, additionally, we've submitted for a six million dollar appropriation with, uh, Joe Takuta's office. And, um, Rich is not on this call, but I believe he has also committed, um, the balance of dollars needed to complete phase one. So we do have the monies needed already to complete phase one.
And, and what does, uh, phase one consist of?
Um, if we could go back to that, um.
Go back to that slide, please?
That slide.
Oh, wait a minute. I, let's see if I, if you can see my, can they see my screen here?
I'm not sure. Well, I know the main component, component of the phase one was the, uh, food storage warehouse. And that is really important for our community because currently, you know, I, I'm born and raised in Wa- in I, in Makaha actually and have lived through Hurricane Eva and Iniki and have been, you know, on, um, streets where the houses were floating off their foundation down the road and we didn't have power for days. And so that made a really huge impact for me growing up. And, you know, as I grew up and I started learning more about the issues within our community, especially around food and, and, you know, basic needs, that's one thing that really, um, has stayed with me and, and I'm so committed to making sure that our community has the facilities and infrastructure in place to be able to take care of itself. Because when we're closed off, you know, we're, we're, our, our roads in are coastal, most of our roads are coastal. When we're closed off, we get blocked off from a lot of the supplies needed to be able to care for our most vulnerable community members. So having that food storage warehouse in place stored with the food and supplies that are needed to be able to take care of our community when we're blocked off is so vital to the wellness of our community. And I think, you know, this campus, while, you know, there's, there's ideas around it for the food part and, and, you know, Jesse's part with the indigenous food growing. I feel like this campus to me represents hope for our community. I know many of you are familiar with a lot of the violence that has been happening within our, our youth, within our community. And I just, there's just so much stressors right now for our, our households who are working multiple jobs, trying to make ends meet. And, you know, I think a lot of focus has been taken off of our kids. And if we can put this facility in to create more jobs and career pathways around health and Aina, I, I feel like it would make the world of difference. So it's not just about providing for basic needs, so also about providing hope and opportunities for youth to be able to, to stay within our community, especially with amazing programs like Ho'a Aina Omakaha and Ma'ua Organic Farm that are doing so great at growing young leaders from within our community. And they get so much rich experience. And then like Jesse, he went on to, uh, U H West Oahu for Sustainable Community Food Systems. Do agree, but it's then, it's the what next? Like our youth grow up into these awesome people with all this rich experience and then they have to leave our state to be able to practice what they learned when there's so much work to be done right within our own community. And so that, that is what this campus represents. So to answer your question, phase one includes the food warehouse, uh, the infrastructure, the food warehouse, within the food warehouse, it is multi-level and includes a mezzanine to be able to house our food as medicine programs, um, and, and the WIC programs, the teaching kitchen and dining room and already, uh, put up is our Hawaiian cultural and teaching center. Um, yeah, so the phase two is really this, um, it's an add-on and I'm trying to raise money for that as well. But the community center would represent space because we are a community who loves to gather. And in our, on our coast, there's not enough places for meetings and spaces where we can gather and learn. Um, and so this community space would be used for meetings, for workshops, uh, classes. But the, the really cool part about it is that the way it's being designed is that during a natural disaster, it would actually, actually double as a shelter for our most vulnerable.
I see. Uh, was there, uh, any movement on work with Luna Lilo Homes and their kapuna housing project or no?
No, uh, Mr. Chair, what that was, they said they were gonna just postpone till, uh, two twenty twenty-six.
Hmm.
But I do have, um, I do have, well, a, an area that I did, or this kapuna garden right here. This is, this is to be connected to the kapuna housing right here, working with Luna Lilo. So that portion is walking in, is walkable into the design that they had given to me. But they said they weren't gonna be doing anything till twenty twenty-six.
Okay, but there's, uh, some additional land on the Malka side of that area that, uh, they could, if they wanted to build a kapuna housing or no?
It's all in these two, uh, in these two T M Ks, twenty-seven and twenty-eight, yes.
Okay. Okay. Uh, any other questions? Uh, very, very impressive, you know, what you guys are talking about. Uh, not only the work that you put into it, laid it out, uh, also the funding. I'm very impressed you guys have a significant amount already in place. So that's, uh, showed you guys have, uh, very committed and appreciate that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, this is just for information, so. Okay, well, uh, I guess running to the final one, you're gonna.
So, um, the next steps is that they will be publishing their draft environmental assessment in the June eighth publication of the environmental notice. There's a thirty-day comment period, um, that will wrap up in July. Assuming that there's no major public comments on their draft environmental assessment, the earliest that staff could bring the final environmental assessment back to the commission for approval is July.
Okay.
And then also wanted to note that our land management division, uh, may be coming to the commission in June next month for a, uh, consideration of a preliminary approval to general lease to Y N I.
Okay. Very good.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we've come to the end of today's agenda. Mahalo for your participation. Tonight's D H H L community meeting starts at six thirty at the Ela Ela Elementary School at forty-seven fifty Uli, Uli Road, Ela Ela nine six seven zero five. Tomorrow's agenda will begin at nine thirty, uh, starting with deferred item G two, followed by the J agenda. And we are recessed for the day. Mahalo.